We've had a couple of issues arise this evening, including an accident en route from our consultants traveling north. They'll be here, but a little bit late. So if we could like to get a motion to switch the master plan update to number two on the agenda and have the capital improvements plan discussion first.
Some of.
Second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Peter, if you would, help us with this.
Yeah, good evening. Peter Brits, Director of Planning and Sustainability, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. So I'm here tonight to talk about the capital improvement plan. If you can bring up the slideshow, Peter, I'll go through it. All right, so the CIP, we're here tonight to kick it off. The planning board, the city council kicked it off earlier this week on Monday, and this is the 27 to 32 CIP. So next slide. The CIP is a six-year financial and infrastructure planning tool to identify capital needs, plan for funding of capital projects, which include a big piece of municipal infrastructure. Next So what qualifies for a capital improvement item? Typically, infrastructure projects, planning and design projects, purchases for large equipment and vehicles, and then and vehicles that have a greater than a 10-year lifespan, and land acquisition projects. Next slide. How are the CIP projects evaluated? They're, they have to fulfill a core function. We look for a financial benefit to the city and determine, does the project address a community plan or service improvement? Funding local capital outlay. So local capital outlay or cash from the general fund, the city's target is to invest not more than 2% of a prior year's general fund budget. In 2026, they kept it down to 1.08% of capital outlay going into the CIP request. Next slide. The other way funding is used, or local funding options, is bonding with annual payments of principal and interest referred to as debt service. The target for debt service is to remain below 10% of the annual budget. In FY '26, the net debt service was equal to 7.9% of the annual budget. You'll see here an out years going up, and next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about that. This slide shows that we do plan ahead with our capital improvement plan. Looking ahead at our projection is to keep the net debt service, as I said, below 10%. And while it looks like we're going to exceed that 10%, when you look out in the future, we typically, as we plan, push some projects out to further timelines, and that bumps up that number in future years. And then the numbers fall off because we don't know all the projects that are going to be coming up in years, in years ahead of those. So this is the typical trajectory, and that 10% is something that we keep track of. Next slide. So if you look at five fiscal years, FY '20 to FY '25, we can see that the city has invested over $255 million in just over 500 projects. And then the graph shows the breakdown between general government, including schools, and then water and sewer. Next slide, thank you. I won't go through all these, but to explain the steps for the board, first, the CIP includes six years of capital planning. Planning is recommended by the planning board to the city council and adopted by the city council in December. Second, the first year of the CIP plans, as it is finalized in December, and it becomes part of the proposed budget that the council considers through the spring and votes in June. And then finally, any long-term borrowing comes back for another review by the council when they consider bonding authorization. Next slide. So a little bit about the timeline. For this year's CIP, the departments will finalize their recommendations by September 26. The planning board will have a joint work session with the council on November 12, and hopefully, the planning board will then recommend a CIP to the council on November 20. Typically, the planning board has a CIP subcommittee, and maybe we can talk about after, I have one more slide to go through, but go to the next slide, and we'll talk about the citizen requests. So as departments are putting together now, we're also asking for citizen requests to be submitted no later than December 19. Those citizen requests and requests from boards in the, in the city all get compiled, and they get reviewed on October 9 at 6:00 P. M. in Conference Room A. And so that's, that's it for the presentation, but I did want to bring up that typically there's a CIP subcommittee from the planning board, and I'll take questions now if there's any questions about the process.
The board members understand what the capital improvements plan is, and we've got two things tonight, that capital improvements plan, and then also a discussion with the consultants about the master plan. Both of those have the word "plan" in them, and we are the planning board, and so we have a role in each. Peter did explain it, but it was pretty fast, so if you have any questions. Yes, Bill?
Thank you very much. This is a good process, and it's a good document. I'm hoping this is an appropriate place to talk about a couple substantive things that might be in the plan that were not last time. Let me give it a shot, and if the reality is that this isn't a place to talk about it, we can do otherwise. But one is, one that the city council a year ago or so had, housing is a top priority, and in the $100 million or whatever is in the capital improvement plan, there was nothing for housing. So the question to me was, you know, if that really is a priority, somehow it should show up either as in building infrastructure for housing, or donating land for housing, or subsidizing in some other fashion for housing. And it wasn't the case. So does the housing committee have a agenda item relative to the capital improvement plan so they can work with you to identify potential ways, if that really is the city's top priority, that some funds might be allocated over the next six years to housing?
Well, the housing committee is advisory, so they could make a recommendation along those lines. There is a housing trust fund, and that, that has funds in it, but that could be one avenue they could explore is adding more funds to the housing trust fund to facilitate more workforce or below-market rate housing. It really is up to the different committees and boards, and ultimately, the city council, to put actual dollars into housing beyond what the housing trust fund has. So I guess, it's not the wrong place to, it's not the wrong place to start talking about it, for sure.
Is there, so that'll be, they'll be on your dance card for groups that you talk to?
Different groups will probably bring it up, given them the interest in housing.
Okay. And we will be discussing that stuff, Bill. So since our other consultant hasn't arrived yet, I thought, why not talk about it a little bit? But it's a placeholder, you know, for tonight to remember to talk about it. Tonight's about process and what the capital improvements plan process actually is, and that's what Peter was, I think, intending to describe for us. The details of what gets in it, that's, that's the next step that you're talking about.
And there will be a subcommittee of this group that will participate in that?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because we talk about subgroups for the CIP, and I don't want anyone to get confused, because you'll hear there's a subgroup of city councilors that meet as well. But we meet with a specific purpose of looking at all of the resident requests that come in and trying to decide which ones fit into the CIP or maybe fit into a different process. So it has nothing to do with what the planning board does as a subgroup, but I just didn't want people to get confused when they hear that.
That's helpful.
And that would be a similar place for a question on parking?
Any citizen request that gets submitted by September 19 goes into that pool, and we talk about it. And there is also a, at the end, a time for public comment as well. We discuss it with staff at that point in a, in a public meeting, and then take public comment from any residents that want to talk about their part.
Jumping ahead a little bit in the agenda, I did, I do have a placeholder. I've gotten a list of issues from the housing committee from Councilor Tabor, and also, as I'm sure many of you know, the legislature has changed some of the statutory authority on things that relate to parking and other things that we, the legal department's looking into. We will be looking at zoning amendments to bring our ordinance into conformance with those. So there's a few things that are coming up and relate to that.
We'll talk that at the end or later on.
That was my plan. I'm not sure if we've heard, any, any other questions for Peter? Anybody who wants to be on the capital improvement subcommittee, let Peter know, and then I'll know. And we'll, this Peter, not that Peter.
Or me, either one.
Well, either one, I guess. Let a Peter know.
A Peter.
Yeah. So if there's no more questions, yeah, it's just the kickoff of the CIP process. It's a planning document that we're starting, so feel free to reach out to me with questions along the way.
Thank you very much, Peter.
Sure.
Just, Matt, have you heard anything from?
No, I just kept rolling, if that's all right.
So if you'd just introduce yourself, because this is the first time I've, I've met you face-to-face this evening, and I don't think any of the board members, maybe they have, but I don't think they have met you before.
Yeah, I'm Matthew Latell. I'm the Principal at UTIL. We were engaged to conduct the comprehensive master plan for the city. Associate Principal Zoe Mueller, who is managing this effort, will arrive any minute. So we've decided that I'll just get the show rolling, and I'm sure she'll be here by the time we have discussion and questions. Our intention tonight is to give you an overview of what this plan is about, how the process is going to work. We are not, we're still in what we call, we're sort of terminating the learning phase of this project. We are not at a stage where we're beginning to formulate opinions or plans, but we are, have been doing our homework and are beginning to launch a more sort of public engagement campaign. So this meeting, I think, is intended to give you a sense of what our scope is, where we are in our process, and to answer any questions. And I think particularly important for us to hear any kind of initial concerns that you might have, or areas that you feel that would be important for us to focus on. Next slide. So I've introduced myself. Zoe will be here any moment, and Pete Rovey has been very active in this plan. He's sort of acting as a deputy project manager. He brings happily, probably 15 years in transportation, planning, and street design. So he brings that sort of extra perspective, and he's been very instrumental in working on developing the sort of mapping that, that we're using to analyze the city. So that's us. I'll talk a little bit about the purpose of the plan, then a little bit about the process itself, and then I hope we can leave some time for discussion and questions. Next slide. Next slide. So UTIL is a multidisciplinary planning and architecture firm. We are the prime on this contract, but we have an excellent team of subconsultants for various specialties. Nelson Nygaard is advising on transportation. They're a fairly nationally recognized firm that does that kind of work. Landwise has been advising on economic development and analysis, and NICH is advising on infrastructural engineering kinds of questions. Ann Weidman is our representative on the ground. In conjunction with the planning department, we had held a sort of a place and some scope for someone who is actually on the ground engaged to act as a kind of ambassador and facilitator of, of some of our engagement and some of the work, and also acts in a kind of advisory capacity. And Zoe's here. She's survived a crash that happened.
Welcome, Zoe.
Somewhere in front of her plant, her, her drive. We have offices in Boston, Providence, Burlington, Vermont, a sort of an office in Portland, and I hope someday in Portsmouth. So, next slide. We've done a number of comprehensive plans, mostly in Massachusetts, but more recently, more and more in New Hampshire. Some are same, some are quite different. It really depends on the planning that has preceded the plan, the, the objectives of the municipality, the size of the city. Portsmouth is already shaping up to be, I would say, a relatively unique master plan, given the, the context and some of the, the planning that's already been done here. But we've recently completed a master plan for Salem. We did a master plan for Nashua, for instance, and several municipalities in, in Massachusetts of very different sizes, obviously, between Boston and Andover, for instance. Next slide, please. Our practice areas span from high-level policy planning all the way down to architecture, interiors, and graphic design. This gives us a kind of a deep bench, if you will, to address some of the things that might come up in a comprehensive plan. In the urban design and planning arena, as I mentioned, comprehensive planning is a core part of our kind of work that we do. We do housing and transportation policy strategy. We do a lot of work around zoning, so we're very literate in how zoning is implemented, both from a kind of municipality side, but also we see things through the lens of development as well, because we do a lot of architectural work on that side. And then we do a lot of different plans at different scales. Sometimes it's a corridor, sometimes it's a neighborhood. So, and, and these projects usually combine two sets of skill sets. One is planner-planners who think more about policy, land use more generally, analytics, all the way to sort of urban design, which is really just designers that are thinking more at the, the block scale or the corridor scale. And we anticipate all of these come together for this, this effort. Next slide, please. I mentioned Ann Weidman, who is our fantastic community organizer. We didn't know we would have Ann before we were awarded this project, but it's been a really a perfect fit. You probably know her from somewhere, because she's deeply involved in all sorts of organizations and efforts in the city. She really has her ear to the ground. Her, her role really is to engage, listen, be an ambassador, if you will, be able to show up at the farmer's market to hand out questionnaires, to let people know what's going on with the plan, to meet people where they are, if you will. In addition, she will have some sort of what we call quantitative goals, is obtaining a certain number of specific meetings, one-on-ones with people, meeting with, with groups, individuals, and really just sort of spreading the word. Next slide, please. Okay, so what a comprehensive plan is and it isn't. Next slide, please. There's two aspects to the comprehensive plan. One is the, is the, the process itself, and then there's the sort of the final plan. The process itself is really about developing and identifying and sort of articulating what the shared values of the city and the community are, identifying a kind of strategic vision for what we want the city to be in the future, and then a framework for how, how we, how we get there, how we implement these things. So the final plan typically will include what we call a growth framework, which is also growth and preservation. If zoning is one of the tools in the toolkit to get us there, it may provide recommendations about how that can happen, capital investment priorities. Just heard about the CIP, so we will be ideally aligning with those efforts, policy program priorities, and then a kind of framework, what we call a framework for more detailed district and topic-specific plans. So a comprehensive plan builds off of previous and current other planning processes, but it also, let's say, gives birth to other planning processes that are identified as necessary through the comprehensive plan. In other words, areas where, oh, that, that's important, we need to study that further to get to where we need to be. So what is a comprehensive plan not? It is not a zoning rewrite or the writing of the rewriting of the zoning. It is not super detailed, topic areas or place-specific kinds of things, and it's not a kind of super detailed map of where resources get spent or where they don't. I think the best comprehensive plans identify and sort of collate all the efforts and, and positive trends that are sort of underway, and identifies where the city wants to go generally, based on feedback from the community and the experts like you, and then tries to identify cross, let's call it cross-disciplinary or cross-topic strategies for implementation that might include, for instance, new land use policies that are aligned with infrastructure or roadway improvements, right, or, or other kinds of things. The more layers you get around these, these initiatives, the more effective it can be. And I think that's one of the important rules of a comprehensive plan, is to find those, those sweet spots, if you will, where a lot of ongoing initiatives can really come together and get sort of supercharged. Next slide, please. So we had been studying all the considerable planning efforts that, that have taken place recently. We're sort of starting a little bit with the Portsmouth 2025 Plan, which identified sort of big themes about vibrancy, authenticity, diversity, connectivity, and resilience. The, that plan was paired with this sort of neighborhood character diagram that you see on the right, that distinguishes different place types within the city, urban core corridors, urban neighborhoods, and so forth, and suburban neighborhoods. I think what you can expect to see from us moving forward as we deepen our analysis is doing that kind of analysis, but maybe at a much more fine grain. There's been a lot of development, particularly residential development, that's taken place since this plan was finished. And so there's a very different landscape out there that, and as there are fewer and fewer, you know, potential development areas. and as there are fewer and fewer, you know, potential development areas, my hunch is that our sort of mapping of priorities within the city may begin to get a little bit more nuanced and more specific. Next slide. You've been doing a lot of planning, so this is really, really useful to us. The idea is we don't start from scratch. None of these will go to waste, as I mentioned before. The question to us now is how do we distill these priorities that were identified in these plans and the actions that were identified, and find common ground between them, or find those places where they really align with new priorities and where those plans can come together, where arts and culture priorities might align, for instance, with pedestrian plan update, for instance, and then possibly also in sustainability and resilience. So this is really what puts the comprehensive, you know, comprehensive plan, is how those layers actually work together. Next slide, please. So as I just mentioned, really, this master plan is going to be about filling the gaps between those plans and providing, if you will, the sort of glue. The little diagram on the lower right there is a kind of ideogram of what is sort of emerging now, which is an image of your downtown, is actually quite evolved, quite stable. There's, I think, unanimous consensus about generally sort of preserving its character and its vibrancy. And I think as we've been speaking with people and taking the tours, that one theme that keeps coming up is how that sort of core begins to connect to other centers and other corridors that may not sort of share some of the same historic attributes or walkability or things of that nature. And those sort of themes work their way through, looking specifically at a few topic areas listed here. Housing, how do we define what the housing needs are? There's been a lot of housing production. Has it been for everyone? Are there ways of supplying more diverse housing, if that's desirable? The economy, the economy relative to, you know, many municipalities is quite vibrant. There's not a lot of retail vacancy, for instance. So what is it the kind of, does the city want to diversify its employment base? Does it want to affect the number of workers that live here or that don't live here? So there's a whole sort of area of exploration that we want to go into there. And then some of this manifests in what we call development patterns in urban form. So if Portsmouth wants to and needs to physically grow in some places, how does that happen? Where are the appropriate places? And how can that growth or development or change sort of align with other priorities that have sort of a knock-on effect? Next slide. I'll talk a little bit about the process, if you go to the next slide. So who's guiding the plan? We work very closely with the Peters here in the planning department. They're sort of day-to-day sort of advisors, project, you know, project management. We check in on a regular basis. There is a master plan sort of advisory group, which is made up of sort of a cross-section of community members who are offering different perspectives on different priorities, people that care about the city. And then there's this board as well. So we intend to be checking in, seeking your guidance, and I think there's even some overlap between the master plan advisory group and some of the planning board as well. So those are our sort of high-level advisors. If you go to the next slide, it explains a little bit where we are. So we've got basically four phases, learning, visioning, developing the plan, and then the documentation. We are sort of moving out of learning and moving into visioning. So this is why it was probably a very good time to speak with you. As the plan of the plan is taking shape, our next phase will be moving more into sort of public engagement. That will form the sort of basis of formulating a vision, if you will, for the city, and that's both a strategic vision, it's a physical vision, it's an aspirational vision, but it also begins to align with sort of some of our deeper analysis that we've already begun on land use patterns, the transportation network, economic development issues as well. After that point, we move into developing the plan, which is really about refining the priorities, understanding how we structure the plan in a way that makes it kind of actionable. And finally, there's a kind of plan production and approval and documentation, where there's a lot of iteration about deciding what priorities are and how things should be expressed. Next slide, please. We had a couple of weeks ago, an excellent site visit. I think all of our sub consultants were also represented. We spent a good, better part of a day looking through some of the recent neighborhoods where a lot of development's been taking place. We had a chance to engage with a lot of people, particularly in your arts and culture sector as well. It was hugely instructive, not just sort of actually taking the time to slow down and look very carefully at what we're seeing, but to speak with people on the ground, to have those conversations about, you know, there's a story behind every single building, and it's very important to understand, not just what the fabric is, but how it got here. There was also a sort of a follow-up event at the farmer's market. So this is a typical way that we keep engaging, is to keep showing up where other people might be for other reasons, make them aware of this process and get them involved. Next slide. We are, one of the strategies that we're doing is distributing what we call comment cards. So Anne has been very busy attending a lot of events. She's been handing out comment cards. It's a way of boosting the visibility of the project, creating a sense of engagement. Some of these photos you see are from our Worcester comprehensive plan. Lower right image is our community organizer that we had there, but it's kind of creating a sense of, let's call it, healthy virality about the news about the plan, and creating buzz and spreading the word, both visually and graphically. There are online places for people to submit comments that will be sort of ongoing, and I think in-person places, for instance, at the community campus or library, City Hall as well. Next slide. So I don't know, Zoe, do you want to talk about this?
Hi there, everyone. Sorry I was late. Appreciate that you gave us a little bit of grace on that. I'm Zoe Mueller. I'm the project manager supporting Matthew on the project, and I can give you just a sense of what this tool is, is something that's active for us right now. It's intended to be a complement to the visioning comment cards, which are more of a physical tool that helps with really in-person interactions and is kind of a light-touch thing that helps people get interested in the plan. This kind of goes a little deeper and helps us to bring people in that are maybe more active online or aren't at as many of those events, and helps get on their radar and also create a conversation and actually some interaction between people online, which is really valuable, because that's something we always appreciate about our in-person interactions, so we look for ways to recreate that online. So this is a tool that's called Polis, and what's really special about it is that it really creates a conversation which people are inputting their own statements, their own opinions into it, and it's helping us, using algorithms, using machine learning, to group patterns in what people are bringing up, what people are sharing, what their opinions are on key topics that are really active conversations in the community. And this is by no means something that dictates the direction of the plan, but it's a really useful tool for us to just see what the conversation is like, and where there may be some areas of potential consensus, things that across a lot of different, you know, opinion groups that people generally agree on, like for instance, in Portsmouth, I imagine that the beloved downtown is going to come in strong as something that everybody has a tie to and really has a lot of passion for and is part of why they're here. So those kinds of things are really helpful for us to see it coming through and check that the online and the in-person's kind of syncing up. The other thing that you're kind of, so that's on the left, that this sort of what looks like kind of a tadpole is showing you visually on the left where there's that big grouping. This is an example in Worcester, where all those groupings on the left, those are statements where people had very similar reactions. So those are areas of consensus. So you can, one of the things that's powerful about this, once people understand the diagram, is it shows we agree on a lot. There's a lot of things that we're, we feel good about and we can move forward with, and there's some things we need to keep talking about. So that's what that tail is, the things that are kind of the thin out to the right on that, that sort of dot diagram are showing places where there are statements that are more controversial, that are sparking more of a dissonance or frustration in people's opinions and sort of relationships to a topic. And then on the right, those kind of, you know, two bubble diagrams are showing groups of opinion, so groups of reactions to a topic. And that helps us to understand, are there kind of specific, you know, things that are animating a reaction, that are like part of the sort of what undergirds of something that people are saying frequently is what's animating it. So this will all kind of begin to make sense as you see what conversations come through in Portsmouth. And right now, we have 260 responses on this, and we hope to get closer to 500, 1,000, something like that, as it kind of picks up pace and we switch gears from the heavy in-person work over the summer to more online work as people come back from their vacations or fewer events, and kind of try and capture people on their computers. So if you want to go to the next slide, this is, again, just an example. It will be different for Portsmouth, but these are an example of some of the top ten things that came up in the Worcester version of this survey. They just helped us to see what are some of the things that people wanted to talk about in the master plan, and we could then carry them forward. Some are more relevant than others. Typically, a master plan is not really about trash, but that was something that people wanted to talk about, and it actually was a good entry point for us to talk about the pedestrian experience, and that was really what people were talking about when they talked about trash. So anyways, this is a great tool for us. It's been so useful in probably, I think, like eight different planning processes like this, where it's really helped us to get a head start and just getting a pulse on what people are talking about, what people care about, and then we can pick it up and check it in our future engagement events in person, through other survey tools, and just kind of see if we're getting it right as we keep on going. And then as we kind of move into kind of more complimentary engagement tools, the open houses and workshops are going to be critical to get people in a setting that may be more familiar for a lot of folks who participate frequently in planning processes. It'll be in the evening. Our, it's coming up on September 15th, will be our first one, and that'll focus on sharing some of our observations, some of the analysis that we've been doing, and what we've kind of taken away from our conversations thus far, and start to check that direction against other people's experiences, see if it's resonating, and kind of use that to shape the vision, the goals, et cetera. So this is just to kind of give you a sense of what the feel is like. We try and make them very fluid, very open, so people can have kind of ad hoc conversations with the planning team, and we can go deeper on these questions and not just get at the surface level and kind of have that Q and A relationship. We want to really get into conversations with people. Next slide. The other benefit of this kind of approach is it allows us to extend the impact by having those boards, those same kind of display boards with explanations and activities that we use in those open houses to then be available on a standing basis in places that people come to frequently. So for instance, you might think City Hall, the library, community campus, places like that, where we might be able to get the attention of people who are coming for another reason, maybe aren't tuning into the plan as much, but they see the boards and they're intrigued. We get a little bit more input and validation of whether we're on the right track. Next slide. So thank you for listening to us talk for a while. We really mostly are here to hear from you. We want to hear about your ambitions for the plan, what you feel like we should be getting out of it, how you define success, so that we can make sure as we're carrying it forward, we're really meeting that challenge, and we're really working with you to get you a plan that's going to work really well for you for the next decade. So these are just a couple of prompts to kind of get the conversation going. Happy to go back to slides if there are questions or things you wanted to clarify, talk more about. Really, the time is yours to kind of, you know, make sure that we're helping you understand where we're headed and that we're doing what you have in mind for the plan. So I think with that, maybe I'll hand it back to you, Rick.
Thank you, Zoe, and I should note that you made some extraordinary effort to be here tonight, which is very appreciated, so thank you for that.
Of course.
Questions, Zoe or Matt? Yes, Logan first.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Thanks again, both of you. Really great presentation. I had a couple of questions written down, and I realized my first question is maybe repeating the first question of yours back at you, but just from a structural perspective, I understand you're drawing on a lot of different resources to create the plan. Is generally your plan to sort of open what we have and edit it, or start from scratch and create something new? Like what's your kind of thought or plan on that? Reason there are-
Yeah, that's a great question. Do you want to, okay. So I think generally what we do is we, you know, this, it's been a decade, right, essentially since the last one? So what we use the, kind of the prior plan for is there's, there are many things that are kind of stable in a community throughout time, and for instance, the map of the different kind of pattern areas, that immediately resonated with us, that that's, a lot of that is still true, that interpretation of the city. But there are important places where it's evolved, because development has happened, you know, infrastructure has shifted, the perception of a place has shifted. So what we tend to do is we treat it as a really strong foundation for us and like a reference document, but we don't kind of pick it up and start like redlining it and sort of tweaking things. We really just kind of keep it as a reference point, and we start fresh, keeping that in mind and being sure that we're carrying forward things that were mentioned there, and we're kind of checking it against where you are now, what you want now, and if it's all still resonating. Like when I saw the list of the, the kind of guiding principles or kind of the themes that came through of engagement, a lot of that struck me as pretty consistent with sort of broadly speaking what we're starting to hear now. So we don't need to reinvent stuff, but we don't start from the premise that we're tweaking that. We start from the premise that we're using it as a resource.
Thank you for doing this. This is very important work. Several of us are on the planning board because of this more strategic view as opposed to a lot of the detailed stuff that we normally do. I've got two thoughts that I'm concerned about, I think. One is that Portsmouth is the center of a metropolitan area, and it's not a standalone city. Majority of the people that work here live in Rochester, or Somersworth, or Dover, or elsewhere in Rockingham County. So the focus being Portsmouth is right, but it has to be in the context of the role in the metropolitan area. And there are a couple oddities in that. One is PES, where there are 10,000 jobs. It's located in Portsmouth, but it's really not under the management of the Portsmouth government. So somehow, there should be a recognition of the role of PES in the metropolitan area and its impact on Portsmouth. A corollary to that would be the Fox Run Mall in Newington. Torrington's going to spend a half a billion dollars on that over the next timeframe of this plan, and it has huge implications for the business community in Portsmouth, which people haven't really, we, none of us have really started to think about the implications of what the development, redevelopment of that mall might mean for Portsmouth. So there's implications for housing. We often think that housing has to be in Portsmouth, but maybe not. And there's implications for transportation. We really do not have a robust regional transportation system, and if the, if the employment is going to be distributed, then there has to be a way to get to the work site. So, you know, somewhere in the thinking about regionalism, there's a transportation implication of that. So I guess the thought is that as you do this- do this, please don't limit yourself to thinking about, you know, what people think in the context of just Portsmouth and it's how we fit in the, in the broader region. The second is there'd be a lot of discussion of development and where we should go in the future. There's an equally important thought about preservation of what we have. Most people in Portsmouth love Portsmouth. And it's important to understand why. And as we develop things in the future, not to unintelligently trade off what we have. I'm glad that everybody loves Market Square, but, but it extends throughout the historic district. And in much of what the board does in land use activity, we really don't have any aesthetic component of our discussions. It's heights and setbacks and stuff like that. But it's not how we retain the aesthetic of Portsmouth. So for one, one person's point of view, if, if out of this process, there could be a way that we could help understand the wonderfulness of what we have and how to protect it, that would be a very good outcome.
Yeah, absolutely. Two really great points and something that especially when, you know, there's a lot of analysis that we did to kind of make sure that when we came onsite, we were able to kind of make the most of our time here. And both of the things you just raised were really, you know, we had a hunch based on our conversations with you and others that that was, we had to, you know, really be thinking about those things. And as soon as we were here and thinking about it onsite, it was, those things were just so apparent that we need to really be thinking about, you know, when we talk about growth, some of it isn't necessarily projecting new growth and encouraging new growth in specific areas. It's also about managing where the growth is already occurring and thinking about how do we get that to fit and be complementary and be supporting kind of the, the network that you have and, and be kind of playing off of those places where you really want to be careful and be preserving and protecting a pattern that people love and really helping to describe and reinforce what that pattern actually is. Because oftentimes when we talk to folks about the places they love the most, they struggle to explain what it is. You know, they know it's great, but they maybe have trouble saying, this is specifically the thing that's making it feel that way. And we're really good at helping to tease that out. So we're already planning to do some of that work to sort of say, this is some of the things we noticed about these places that you've named, that you really love and want to protect. Are we getting it right? Do you think those are the, the things that are making it work? Okay, great. We can, now we have some language for like how to protect it that goes beyond just historic preservation and starts to talk about when there's maybe a vacant, you know, maybe there's a parking lot. And you're like, actually, we'd like to have a building there, but we want it to work with the historic district. Kind of a language for what that means, that, that isn't just about style. It's about the relationship to the street and, and what it's doing for the kind of the functioning of the place. So I really appreciate you bringing that up. And to the regional point, point, I think there's a lot of things that we're starting to observe about even within Portsmouth, kind of the structure and relationship of like different patterns, different kind of the suburban neighborhoods' relationship to the downtown, Kittery's relationship to Portsmouth, that I think start to suggest like principles that we can kind of set in motion for Portsmouth that should be applied further beyond Portsmouth. And the same idea continues and, and the, the, you know, municipal line is, is just something that's on maps. It doesn't necessarily correspond to how people are living their lives. So I think it's a really good point that we, we keep that in mind and we actually changed the way where our maps looked. We had a really strong border around Portsmouth and we've brought back all of the context because we're realizing how critical those relationships are to be constantly part of the way we're thinking about that. So I encourage you to keep us accountable on both of those points because I think they're really important.
So I was curious when you were showing those cards that were, you know, for people, you had places where they had been distributed, listed. And I live in one of them and work in the other community campus and have had, heard absolutely nothing about this. So as a resident of PHA, I'm a little surprised that it does say that they're out there, but we, we've heard nothing about it. And as an employee at community campus, we've heard nothing about it. And I work for, you know, one of the largest childcare providers in the area, and we've heard nothing about it. So I was just curious how you're getting the word out?
Mm-hmm.
So that people who are living in these areas of these cards are being, maybe they're put out somewhere, but we're just not hearing or seeing them.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate you bringing that up. So we, up, up through the summer, we are mostly focusing on events. And then just in the last week or so, we focused on then, now that the sort of events are winding down a little bit, the pacing of them are reducing, getting some collection boxes into some of the places where people are kind of going frequently, either because they live there or they are visiting there for, during the day. And we had them out for like about a week and we haven't gotten cards back. So we're planning to go back and talk to the folks, because we, oftentimes it's a, it's a nuanced thing of, you know, where is the box? Who's this person staffing it? Who's like raising it and talking about it? So we'll keep kind of pushing that and hopefully those will start to have a similar impact as what the kind of community events have been, because in that setting, Anne and whatever other city staff or consultant team staff are with her are really kind of reaching out to folks and say, hey, like, come, come talk to us. We want to talk about Portsmouth. Like, I'm sure you have an opinion. Can you share it with us? And that pulls people in. So sometimes there's a little bit of boosterism that's required to kind of actually get it on people's radar. So I appreciate you raising it and we can keep getting it better. The visioning comment cards, we often are kind of flexible about when we close that sort of engagement tool. So we kind of keep pushing it until we feel like it's a natural point to shift gears and start talking about recommendations or start talking about kind of the next stage. So we can absolutely kind of keep it up, open and try and keep boosting awareness in the places where we haven't been getting as much traction yet. So that's helpful feedback and we'll recalibrate and do better on those kind of physical spots that we're kind of having the collection. And then we also expect to have a couple more events. And for PHA in particular, we are in touch with folks at PHA who are kind of planning to do it more on like an event basis. So that one is less of a like, at this point, it hasn't yet been broadcast. It's more of a like, individual staff members are reaching out as they talk to people and kind of encouraging them to fill out and provide some input. So we'll keep kind of recalibrating that and, and get more input from it as we go.
Hi. The largest employer in our area shares our name, but not our, our border. But consider Portsmouth Naval Shipyard and its importance and its impact on our economy because they, they, they can't meet their, their employment goals and their workforce needs without the city of Portsmouth and without New Hampshire. So in some way, I don't know how, engaging with them across state lines.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So we've already started talking to, this is, you know, different, obviously, but to the port and to PES with a similar kind of spirit in mind. They're distinct entities. They have a lot of sort of control and, and needs for their own land and their own sort of economic functions to work. So we haven't yet had sort of like a explicit outreach to the, the shipyard, what we expect to over the course of the project, because obviously, and to the point that Bill made about sort of the regional relationships, like that's right across the, you know, the state line, literally in your, you know, your harbor and your bay. So we fully expect that that'll be part of the plan and we'll see kind of where that conversation takes us. But I think those kinds of relationships, economic relationships, housing relationships that are right at your borders are absolutely part of what this kind of effort is about. It's about shaping the strategy for those relationships and how you are going to kind of deal with those relationships within Portsmouth, but also how you're communicating out to those partners. This is really where we want to go. How do we get there? Like, does that line up with what you're doing or not? And how do we address that? So it's intended to be kind of a communication partnership tool as well.
Thank you.
Andrew? I'm glad that you had the opportunity to do a site visit. I, I don't know if we were invited and I missed it, or?
No, you weren't invited. Sorry.
Wasn't invited. Got it. It's okay.
There's still time. We'll be with you for a while. I promise it means nothing about our intentions to continue engaging with you.
I did put deodorant on today, so it's okay. I think that the next time you do that site visit, it is imperative that the members on this planning board are in attendance to that. And even if it's just us and you all, it seems very critical because there are a lot of nuances to why certain sites look a certain way that, albeit Anne Wyman is extremely helpful and can contribute, but may not have those nuances or details. So I think that's very important. And I think September 15th could be a good day to do both of those things if you have the availability. Secondarily, number four, what does success look like to you? It's, no one really knows how to quantify or qualify success in this scenario, or very few people do. Sure, if you're a city staffer or you all, but nonetheless, the general public or other members of the planning board may not know how to capture that. So a better question, I think, is what does failure look like? And that would be sort of glazing over a lot of our zoning ordinance or some of the projects that we've had in the past that have caused a reaction, whether positive or negative, that I think we have the ability to improve upon. So I think number four could read in the inverse and what is, what does failure look like? So to me, I hope that that can be articulated because you'll probably get a much better reaction or stimulate a better crowd when you ask it that way, because you'll obviously get quite a few outcryers and that's okay. Like, that's kind of what we're looking for to then improve upon ourselves in the future.
Yeah, I appreciate that. We definitely, I will be, would be happy to figure out a way for the September 15th day. I mean, I have to look at kind of the schedule, but I think that'd be a great opportunity for us to kind of, you know, when we've, the first site visit that we do, we often are really kind of looking to the staff and the communities that we work with to kind of guide us through some of the, you know, basics and really get us grounded. And then we found that it's really effective to engage with the planning board. Once we kind of have that first foundation, we're beginning to pivot towards those, what you're describing, those more, you know, project-specific, site-specific, beginning to think more, in a more granular way about zoning, because you're dealing with all of the nuances of how people, how developments are, you know, navigating your current zoning, where are the friction points, what are the community members, you know, finding objectionable or upsetting? And that, we're best able to have that conversation with you and we're closer to that midpoint. So I think that the 15th will be a really good time for us to kind of be, you know, we'll be pivoting towards that, that level of specificity. And I think it'll help to enrich our understanding at that point.
It just reminded me, you sort of alluded to Market Square being the epicenter of Portsmouth. And I think maybe changing that verbiage would help you in the long run.
Oh, yeah. I think it's, it's more like downtown as a whole, you know, I think you're...
Even that alone, I think just where we are headed in our zoning changes in the last three months would indicate that Route 1 corridor and other parts of Western Portsmouth or Southern Portsmouth are getting much more of that attention. And on top of that, we don't want people who don't necessarily spend a lot of time in downtown Portsmouth to feel as though they don't have an ability to contribute or have a need to contribute. So I think...
Yeah, happy to change that, that phrasing. I think, especially because I think the intention isn't what you heard, which is helpful for us to know, because then we can fix it. Because I think what we're observing is there's, you know, in the, in the conversations we've been hearing amongst people who live all over the region that we've spoken to, including, you know, in Rye and Rochester and like, you know, in Kittery, that there's a, a shared pride about downtown Portsmouth, whether or not people are visiting frequently, and that it's something that people value, which is not to the exclusion of where they are actually living, because the majority of people who are talking about that don't live downtown, don't shop frequently downtown, which is not a criticism. But I think what we're noticing is there's a really, an opportunity, especially as we think about the prior master plan, the 2025 master plan, and pivoting to this one, you've already started to see a lot of development outside of downtown. You've seen a lot of pressures that are pushing, you know, people to kind of invest in and sort of build, you know, more, you know, of a neighborhood center perhaps outside of downtown. And so I think that's actually where we're imagining the direction of the plan might be about kind of continuing to recalibrate and protect and sort of continue to enhance and tweak what makes downtown great, but also putting a lot more focus on how does that relate to all of the neighborhoods? What is the vision for each of the neighborhoods? You know, how do we think about what's the kind of nucleus of each of those neighborhoods, what their key corridors are, where their amenities are, to kind of really be more sensitive to that as part of where there's actually a lot of change and uncertainty maybe, and questions about how to shape development in those places where maybe it is a more dramatic change from what the sort of maybe a more suburban corridor is, and then you're seeing a larger multifamily building go in. How does that relationship get kind of reconciled and sort of move towards something that people can see as mutually beneficial? Does that help at all?
Yep.
Um, ooh, that sounded really loud.
It was.
I didn't mean to be that loud. It was really loud. One of the questions I know that the city council has been asking a lot is how do we get, because I think there are a lot of residents that actually do live here that don't spend a lot of time downtown. So having answers to that question and the reasons why would be super helpful to us, I know. One of the other things I want to talk about is our zoning. And I think that we've failed in a few areas, and it's mostly when you're thinking about the urban cores next to really dense residential neighborhoods and transitions between the two of them. I'm struggling to try to get some of that changed, but I think it would be really helpful if we're looking at especially, you know, what uses are actually happening, what uses make sense based off of density, and really trying to have a conversation about that and how we interact between really urban areas and more residential areas. Because we do have a housing crisis. We absolutely need diversity of housing. We absolutely need diversity of affordability of housing. And we definitely need regional transportation. So everything everyone's been talking about is right on, but I want us to be really sensitive to outside of downtown and how we interact between those urban areas and the residential neighborhoods that we butt up against, because we are going to start to see a lot more residential development near strip malls and Route 1. And, you know, the whole idea behind our gateway when we created it was to be able to have these little pockets of commercial and residential that become like pocket neighborhoods all throughout the city. And maybe they're a little bit more than that in some areas. But I just want to make sure that we are, you know, conscientious about those neighborhoods that are really stable that deserve some sort of transitioning in our zoning and how we can make that happen.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And, and one of the things that was really noticeable for us as we were kind of navigating the city at the beginning of August is that there are several pretty abrupt transitions that I think maybe historically have held for, you know, maybe there's a natural barrier there, like a waterway or wetlands. Maybe there's an infrastructural barrier. But there are other places where there's a thinner line between very different patterns. And I think those are places where we can give some, you know, we'll be having conversations with folks about like where we might zoom in as we get towards the latter part of the plan. And those are places that might pop up as we think about that, where there's, oh, it's, it's actually a pretty complicated question of how do you make it feel good, but really keep that connection strong, but also allow for some distinction that is valued by people who are seeking different experiences on either side of that line.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment.
I, I have questions, but also don't have much time. I'd like to note that we've got a really good consultant. We've got a very good planning staff. And I'd like to issue a challenge for the planning board to really work with this group to try to come up with something that's special. Because we can just listen to what they have to say and let it happen, or we can get engaged. And one thing that I know Zoe has mentioned is a possibility is actually talking with planning board members of how they could get engaged and not step on the toes of the consultant, to put it bluntly. So that's a conversation we won't have tonight, but I think that's an option. And that's one way, because outreach is a way to get, the more outreach that can happen, the better the plan will be. And that's a very costly, difficult part of the process. So that's how we could, one way we could help step up. Folks, I'd really like you to think about it and find ways that we can work with this strong team to come up with a great plan.
So great segue for me, Rick, to the next slide, which I won't use to, we can keep talking about, but I think it'll help with what you were just talking about, because we are planning to offer, and we're happy to schedule another one if these don't work, but two trainings on outreach to help you understand kind of some of the things that have been effective for Anne and what tools we have and kind of what our strategy is that we can help to kind of plug you in. Not mandatory, obviously, but anybody who's interested, if you want to, maybe Peter, not to put you on the spot, but maybe you can contact Peter, let him know if you're interested and we can make sure that you're plugged into one of those. It's Wednesday, September 3rd from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. and Wednesday, September 3rd. It's Wednesday, September 3rd, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., and Wednesday, September 10th, from 5:30 to 6:30. We try to pick just different times that might work for different people, but please let us know if neither work for you, and we'll figure it out. But the idea is we want to kind of, you know, over the summer, we were really kind of getting, gathering our steam and getting Anne kind of feeling comfortable in the role and kind of having, getting in a groove. And now I think we're in a great place to kind of open it up and bring more people into the fold and just kind of amplify that capacity and show up in more places, because like, as you mentioned, right, you're like, I'm already noticing in the places that I'm visiting, it's not going as far as I would have hoped. So that's a great piece of information for us, and each of you, I'm sure, have, you know, individual relationships, that you have a different sort of slice of Portsmouth and can help boost understanding and, and input from that slice. So would welcome that, and, and also kind of more direct engagement beyond, you know, outreach, if there's things that you want to kind of have a more, a sort of more structured conduit to kind of consistently share ideas with us. We would love to have that, you know, integrated into our process in a more continuous way. The updates are really intended to make sure that at those kind of big milestones, we're making sure you're, you know, both oriented and that we're getting input that's relevant to that juncture in the project, but we're going to be, our mind's going to be in this for more than a year, so we're, we're really welcome, you know, we'd love to have your input as we go, as things come up for you that you think we should be attending to.
Thank you very much. I think that's it. Thank you very much. If you get on with our other meeting, but drive carefully.
Will do. Thank you all for your time, and enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you. Logan, I'd like you to sit for Ms. Conner this evening, and Frank, can you sit for Tony Coviallo?
Yeah.
And I thought I saw Joe.
Joe's here. He's right there.
There he is. I did see you come in.
Yes, sorry, I had another, something else to attend to, sorry.
I just kind of thought you might. Quick approval of minutes, everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes from July 17th meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have two determinations of completeness, one for subdivision, 361 Hanover Steam Factory LLC is owner for property at 361 Hanover Street. Requesting site plan approval and preliminary and final subdivision approval for the addition of four new residential structures and renovation of existing commercial building at 361 Hanover Street with associated and required site improvements. Subdivision review, completeness. Motion?
I can't, I'm recusing. Somebody else has to. Motion to approve the subdivision review, item A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll be recusing.
Okay. On, even on completeness, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one recusal. We have site plan review, completeness. Again, Hanover, I'm going to read it again, it's the same thing, 361 Hanover Street. Bromley Portsmouth LLC owner for property, isn't that being, 1460?
I think you need to do Hanover separately since two of us are recusing.
So we'll just do Hanover, is that what you?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do site plan acceptance for completeness, 361 Hanover Steam Factory.
Motion to approve the site plan review for item A, 361 Hanover Steam Factory.
Completeness, not, not approval.
I'm sorry.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And recusal. We have requests of, isn't this one, this one being continued?
No, no.
It isn't, okay. This is the bank.
Right.
At the request of Bromley Portsmouth LLC owner for property 1465 Woodbury, requesting conditional use permit from section 105B 4110 for a development site, a conditional use permit from 10440, use 1940 for a drive-through facility, and site plan review approval for the construction of 2,847 square foot, single-story banking facility with drive-through and associated site improvements, including parking, pedestrian access, utility infrastructure, stormwater management systems, lighting and landscaping. Again, completeness on site plan.
Move second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Request the city of Portsmouth is owner for property at 35 Sherburne Road, requesting review of site plan, review and conditional use permit applications within the Highway Nois overlay district for the recommendation to the city manager for the construction of 127 workforce housing units in three buildings, including demolition of the rear gym of the school and converting the remaining structure into eight units. Construction of a four-story, 90-unit building, construction of a three-story, 29-unit building, and associated site improvements, including utilities, lighting, landscaping, stormwater, parking and access. Again, completeness on those issues.
Move to determine complete.
Second.
Any discussion? These are, these are just moving for completeness of the application so we can proceed for consideration, and that will involve public comment. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We will now have a series of public hearings, and for folks here and online, our rules are that, first is a presentation by the proponent, questions by the planning board members, we then have public comment, which can be in support of, just comments about the application or in opposition to the application. The first round, we have up to three rounds. The first round, you may speak, you have to speak in the first round if you wish to speak in subsequent rounds. First round is three minutes, it's oral comment only. The second round is five minutes, and you can include a presentation if you have a presentation, you can do that in the second round. And the third round is five minutes, oral comment only. Again, if you wish to speak in the second or third rounds, you must speak in the first round, and the same for the second to speak in the third round. After that, the chair closes the public hearing, which is me, and then the board deliberates. We have items A and B in the following, in the agenda, which request to postpone.
Move to postpone.
Second.
I'd like to request that they be re-noticed as well, because it's been postponed a few times, if we could add that to the-
Absolutely.
Request to postpone to the September meeting with a re-notice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business, public hearing, request of Ryan Lebunget, owner as property of 137 Walker Bungalow Road, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, requesting an after-the-fact wetland conditional use permit for work done within 100-foot wetland buffer and 100-foot vernal pool buffer without a permit. Applicant had previously removed a six-by-12-foot rear deck and footings, the new concrete footings were poured, and a new six-by-12-foot deck was built. Crushed stone underneath the deck, cassettes stores, stairs, and a five-square-foot concrete landing with new plantings within the buffer area are all proposed with this application. This property is on Assessor's Map 202 Lot 4, and lies within the single residence B or SRB district. Who is here to present this application? Please step up and give your name and proceed.
Yeah, I'm also the homeowner, my name's Eric Lebunget, with my son Ryan. So we, we tore the deck down prematurely, but we have poured the sonotubes. Serpino came in and redressed the whole backyard, it was in tough shape, so we jumped the gun a little bit, we apologize for that, but we're willing to do, you know, plantings and things like that along the buffer to, you know, rectify the, the situation. So if the deck is going to be exactly the same size of what was there, the stairs are going to be exactly the same size, it was previous, built on cement blocks, we need to put sonotubes in four feet deep, and a landing for, with the stairs hit on the bottom. So that's all we're doing.
Okay. Questions to the applicant? No questions?
I have one.
Sorry, I can't see you. I am.
Peter's like a wall between you and I. Just one quick question, you said that it was on cement blocks and you're going to replace it with the sonic tubes, right? Are those going to be in the same location?
Exactly, in location, yes.
In the same amount of ones, right?
Yes.
The same mass port.
Yep.
Okay, that's my only question.
And you've added crushed stone under the deck, right?
It's there now, yeah. We don't want sediment to the ponds that are in the back, so.
Any other questions to the applicant?
So I just one question, when was the old deck removed? Was that recent?
No, about six months ago.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody here or on Zoom who wishes to speak to, for, against this application? You can be seated unless you wish to speak during the public hearing. Anybody on Zoom?
Ah, nobody.
Last call, anybody wish to speak to, for, against this application? See, nobody on Zoom, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion, we vote to find the conditional use permit application meets the requirements set forth in section 10.1017.50 of the ordinance and adopt the findings effect as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will continue and make a motion that we vote to grant the conditional use permit with the following conditions, 2.1.
Discussion?
It's just replacing what was there, you're not really, you know, and they're going to improve the buffer. There's no way to do this outside the buffer, that's for sure, so I think it's a pretty simple, straightforward improvement.
I agree. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At the request of 361 Hanover Steam Factory LLC is owner for property located at 361 Hanover Street, requesting site plan review approval and preliminary and final subdivision approval for the addition of four new residential structures and the renovation of existing commercial building at 361 Hanover Street with the associated and required site improvements. This property is on Assessor's Map 138 Lot 63, and lies in character District 5 or CD5 and the Downtown Overlay District. Who is here to present this application?
Pleased to be Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Attorney John Boson, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me tonight is Stephen Wilson and Shane Forsley. We have our engineer, John Shagnon from Haley Ward, and Terrence Parker, our landscape architect. We're here tonight requesting site plan review approval and subdivision approval for our 40-unit residential housing project at 361 Hanover Street. By way of background, it would be an understatement to say that it's been quite an odyssey to get here tonight. We started work on this project in early 2024, we had our first meeting before this board, April 18th, 2024, we had a conceptual consultation, followed by our first design review hearing on May 16th, 2024. The original project and building layout with 48 units, although vested by design review, wasn't well received by the neighborhood, so we took comments from the public, city staff, and this board, and we redesigned the project. We broke up the buildings, we reduced the density, and we came back before you for another conceptual consultation on July 18th, 2024. This time, the plan was well received, but it needed zoning relief from the Downtown Overlay District. After multiple ZBA hearings and design tweaks to our plans, we did receive variances from the zoning board on February 18th, 2025. We then came back to this board for another design review on April 17th, 2025. We then went through TAC and received our recommendation for approval last month in July. Throughout this project, though, we had numerous meetings with staff, abutters, legal counsel, we did a traffic study, we had lots of architectural refinements, landscaping and engineering. And on behalf of this team, I can say that over the past year and a half, this project has evolved, it's improved to something that we're very proud of, something that will add much-needed housing to downtown Portsmouth in a very desirable area. As we go through the presentation tonight, I would ask you all not to lose sight of the existing conditions. This property, as it currently sits, is unsightly, it's an old, commercial, outdated, non-functional building with a very long history of industrial and commercial use. What you see tonight is far less intense than what has operated on that site and what could operate on that site. We understand and appreciate that people in the neighborhood don't like change and that are opposed to the project. You heard lots of voices against approval tonight, but I can't stress enough that this project was engineered and designed thoughtfully and carefully to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So with that background, I'd like to invite John Shagnon up to the podium, John will go through the plans, and we'll come back up and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, John. Good evening, planning board members, John Shagnon from Haley Ward. As mentioned, the project is located at 361 Hanover Street, tax map 138 Lot 63, and it lies in a CD5 and Downtown Overlay Districts. The proposal is to renovate and expand the existing 361 Hanover Street building and instruct four new residential buildings, changing the site to 40 residential dwelling units. The site zoning calls for first-floor commercial use, however, in recognition of neighborhood development patterns, the design team applied for and received relief from the Portsmouth Board of Adjustment for first-floor residential use. Plans were refined in the Board of Adjustment process based on neighborhood input, and structures were reshaped and relocated. At that time, the BOA recognized that there would be another process, the site plan review and approval process, which might impact the final design of the building and the site layout. And therefore, the board made it clear, and it's written approval conditions, that their approval was conditioned on the design and location of the buildings may change as a result of planning board review and approval. And in the approval process with the technical advisory committee, that is exactly what happened. So what you have before you tonight is a thoroughly reviewed and compliant proposal for the redevelopment of the parcel. Plan set is arranged in the typical fashion, and since you have had time to review the plans, I will just highlight the important points as I go through the set. Please feel free to ask questions of myself or any team member as we go through. The project includes, next slide, the subdivision of the existing parcel. The proposal is to create two lots, one lot containing the existing Heinemann Building, as it is known, and having an area of 38,528 square feet, and a second parcel that contains the Last Chance Garage, as it is known, having an area of 4,717 square feet. The proposed lots comply with the required zoning density standards, including providing open space and parking. Subdivision plan also shows the easements necessary to maintain both access and utility services to the proposed Lot 1, the Last Chance Garage parcel. The plan set contains an easement plan, next slide, that would be recorded, showing those And since the development will expand the width of the city sidewalk on Hanover Street, a proposed one-foot sidewalk easement to be granted to the city of Portsmouth is included. Additionally, there is a utility easement for the existing underground electrical and communications services crossing over proposed Lot 1 and servicing Lot 2, shown on the plan. The next plan is an orthophoto plan, so a view from above. It shows the budding neighborhood densities and contains a listing of conforming and non-conforming properties in close proximity to the proposal before you. Then we have an existing conditions plan and a demolition plan. The demolition plan, next slide, shows the removal of a small addition on the rear of the existing building, as well as demo work for the replacement of the sidewalk along Hanover Street, and the removal of a significant amount of pavement on the site. Next plan, the site plan, shows the development in, in detail. There will be four new buildings constructed in front of the existing Heinemann Building. They are labeled on the plan as Buildings B, C, D, and E. Buildings B, C, and D are residential duplex buildings, and Building E is an eight-unit building. Starting from the larger Heinemann Building in the middle of the sheet, Building B is directly south, C, south of that, at the Rock Street-Hanover Street intersection, Building D to the right, and then you have the site driveway, and then Building E to the right of that. The site plan shows access from Hanover Street in a location that is across from Pearl Street, the location that the technical advisory committee required. The site plan shows the required parking calculations. The site will contain 66 parking spaces for the 40 dwelling units. Also included is the impervious surface area chart, showing a decrease in impervious- a decrease in impervious surface. There is also in your package a supplemental open space calculation that combines the landscaping shown in green here and the sidewalk spaces as allowed, and shows that the plan meets the required open space and in fact provides 6.4% open space where 5% is required. The zoning development standards table on this sheet lists all the requirements relative to the character district standards and how the plan meets those requirements. The landscaping plan, next slide, shows the addition of significant off-site and on-site landscaping, including the introduction of some street-level landscaping along Hanover Street, and inclusion of off-site landscaping adjacent to Rock Street, which will be maintained by the future residents, is an area of, um, excess right away on Rock Street owned by the city of Portsmouth. Next slide, the utility plan shows the connection from the site. Well, actually, there's details of landscaping, and then the utility plan, sorry. It shows the connection from the site to the city utilities, and those connections have been reviewed and approved by the technical advisory committee. Next plan is a grading and drainage plan showing the site drainage. The site drainage is going to be directed to the existing connections to city infrastructure in a manner that the site is currently directed to. There will be a catch basin connection on Rock Street at Sudbury Street and another connection near the Foundry Place Circle. On-site catch basins and roof drain connections will provide the necessary stormwater connections to the city system. The next plan, roof drainage plan, accounts for the directing of the roof drainage to the collection system based on the projected roof types. The next plan is the lighting plan, which shows the site will be well-lit from building-mounted lighting, and the style and specifications are detailed in the supplemental material. Next sheet, the parking plan, shows the parking spaces and shows the handicap parking and location of interior bike racks. Next plan is the fire truck turning template plan. That was reviewed by the Portsmouth Fire Department, and as a result of comments from the Fire Department regarding access to Hill Street, the site was rededined, and this plan shows that the Fire Department apparatus will be able to access and egress the site without having to travel to or across Hill Street. The architectural plans, and I won't go through them, but they are attached, and they show the building elevations and floor plans. A note in your package on the architectural plans, that sheet 821E, shows the corner of Building E. If you want to get to that, keep going. Keep going. Again. Right there. So in the upper portion of that, it shows the, uh, Building E, the left side is the side against the site access driveway, and the right side is this open side on the north where the parking, uh, spaces are entered. And one of the comments from the technical advisory committee had to do with site, sighting around the driveway corner as you approach Building E, the back of Building E from the driveway. And so notice here that the Building E has been designed to be open at that garage level to allow for sight through the garage, so that vehicles approaching on the driveway can see traffic, and this creates a safe situation and addresses that concern by the technical advisory committee. Additional materials in your package include a site distance triangle plan exhibit. It shows the site driveway will provide safe site distance on Hanover Street, which was a concern of the technical advisory committee in the neighborhood. And the landscaping plan notes maintenance of the landscaping in that triangle area to ensure that the site distance is maintained. Based on the extensive review of this project over the past 24 months, we submit that this design is ready for your approval. The subdivision meets the ordinance requirements for project and is compliant with the applicable site zoning. Sufficient on-site parking is provided. Pedestrian circulation has been reviewed, and a traffic technical memorandum reviewed and approved. It's in your package with recommendations that are reflected in the site plans that you have before you. The traffic memorandum encourages the use of alternative modes of transportation and encourage the developer to provide a transportation coordinator to administer and provide a welcome packet to residents. And the developer is open to that. That will be a part of the condominium documents and operations of the condominium. We submit adequate landscaping has been provided. Infrastructure is in place, including stormwater management. Site letting and signage has been addressed, as well as utilities and solid waste. The technical advisory committee on July 1st recommended to this board that you approve the project subject to conditions, and as noted in the staff memo from the planning department, those conditions have been addressed in the submission you have before you. The planning department listed the appropriate approval conditions for your consideration, and the developer agrees that those conditions are acceptable and appropriate. Therefore, we respectfully request that you grant approval to both the subdivision and site plan here tonight. I or any team member would be glad to answer any questions you have regarding the proposal. Questions of the applicant? Yes, Bill?
I just want to be sure that I understand the easement, which seems to be, uh, not universally agreed. Uh, is it correct that currently the Hill Street Condominium Association has an easement across this property that would interfere with Building E?
That's not a true statement. The first half is true, but the second half is not. So the, um, condominium adjacent to this site seen in the lower right-hand corner certainly does have an easement across this property. But there is also a document that allows the project proponent and the owner of this site to relocate that easement at their expense, and that's what has been done here. This plan shows a relocated easement that complies with and is contained in the site access locations. So that ability for the condominium to, uh, egress through the site is maintained.
So the, the easement has been properly filed 40 years ago, uh, something like that. And has there been an official agreement with the condominium, condominium owners that they accept a change to what that easement was?
So the document's on file. The document was signed by the parties at the time, and the, and the document says that the owners of this property can, as long as they provide a way, they can relocate it. And it doesn't require that the condominium association, quote, approve of that. They approved of that by signing the document many years ago that said, "We will let you relocate it."
Have we seen that document?
Yes, it is included in the package. I'll let, I'll let Attorney Boson speak further, I guess.
This is a complicated issue, and it's being currently litigated in the Rockham County Superior Court, so I don't think that this is the proper venue to discuss it. But to answer your question, there is an easement that is recorded, the Rockham County Registry of Deeds at book 4798, page 0712. That document specifically provides the owners of that condom, of the condominium, the right to, uh, they have an access through the property. Uh, it's a general right of access from Hanover Street and Hill Street across the front parking area. It goes on to say that, um, at the time, the owner, it was HP, it would agree they would remain complete control over deciding the location of such access in the manner in which it is provided. And that's right out of the words of the easement. Um, so we think it's black-letter law that we have the right to relocate that easement. They don't have any right to say where it goes, as long as we provide unimpeded access. Our plan provides unimpeded access, but again, that, this, this is an issue really for the Rockham County Superior Court. We believe we are living up to the, uh, full intent of the easement.
Certainly, we're not lawyers, and we're not a court, and so it's not for us to judge whether the easement's valid or can be changed or whatever, but it is in contention.
Understand.
I'm not, I'm not really sure. There's, I'm sure there's got to be case law somewhere about what planning boards do when there's a easement in contention relative to a site plan.
Well, I think it's, the attorney's correct. It's not our job to, uh, determine how something's being litigated. But there is a related question. I see on the subdivision plan, you've been through several revisions about this easement, and note number 7B says, uh, "This easement to be redefined." But aren't you proposing to extinguish the current location, and actually, you've depicted what you propose it to be? Because the way that that statement is worded, it sounds like it's yet to be defined.
Well, we, we are relocating that easement as shown on the plan.
So it should say, "Be redefined as shown."
As shown. I think that's a fair, we agree with that, John. It's, it's being relocated as shown on the plan.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's a good word, Smith. I mean, note seven is, is headlined by parcel is burdened by the following easements. So it's a recitation of, of easements that affect the parcel. But certainly, uh, 7B can be revised, or a note can be added that this plan, one of the purposes of this plan is to relocate that easement.
And we're very confident we have the right to do that. And we wouldn't have gone through this exercise for the past 24 months to get here tonight, engineer and design this plan. I mean, we're, we're confident that this document gives us the right to relocate that easement. It states it in black and white. It's being challenged. If it gets challenged, we don't build our project, but we're asking for approval tonight. Obviously, in order to shovel the ground, we're going to have to resolve that issue.
Right. And just to clarify the point that I just tried to make, I'm not proposing something. I'm trying to understand what you're proposing.
Fair enough, yeah.
What you are proposing is, this is the easement that you propose based on the rights you, you say you have to do that.
Hundred percent.
So it is to be relo, relo, redefined as shown?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm, I'm not sure if there's, uh, any conditional component of an approval that we would have. We just accept it as the premise that it will be approved?
The, one of the basis, assuming this proceeds to approval, that's yet to be determined. If it does proceed to approval, we have representation by the applicant that they have the right to do this. That, that would be a basis for the approval that this board might grant. If the board grants that approval, and it turns out that representation is wrong, the approval is void. I think Attorney Boson said that in different words. But, but that won't really be determined for another year and a half, right?
Well, we could, we could get an approval tonight, and somebody could file a lawsuit against us tomorrow saying they have adverse possession claims right across the property. We'd never, and get an injunction against us. But until a court tells us that we don't have the right to do it, that we intend to move forward, we believe we have the right to do it. Um, we're asking for approval based on that right. I don't think it's the jurisdiction of this board to weigh in on that easement one way or another, whether it be conditional or not. Um, we have plans that show the easement, where we intend to relocate it. Uh, if a court tells us we can't do it there, then we can't do it there. But our intention is to do it there.
Right.
Um, I have an email, um, that was printed out here. It mentions a hearing in which there was an agreement on May 25th. I'm sorry if this was already addressed and I missed it. Um, but in section three of that agreement, uh, it says the defendant shall not degrade, alter, or diminish the pavement in the claimed easement from its current condition. Um, I'm a little confused as to, uh, how that document would interact.
Yeah, I think we're getting, you know, I, I think unfortunately, normally did not answer the question, but we're getting into an issue that's, uh, being litigated in the Rockham County Superior Court. We have an agreement, we agreed to that agreement, that we wouldn't impede their easement rights, which is exactly what the easement says. The easement says we can't impede their easement rights. Um, we're agreeing that we're not going to impede their easement rights.
That might affect when you would start physical change.
It could affect when we start physical change.
It might necessarily affect an approval process. Uh, one of the reasons this is called a quasi-judicial process is the public hearing has not even begun yet, so we have to see what the public has to say. And, uh, it, again, things, matters of, that need to be litigated as matters of equity, that's not our bailiwick. But if something else comes up, we'll see what, what else comes up. Any other questions of the applicant? Yes, Bill?
I do have one footnote on that question. Is the Last Chance Garage, how is their access affected?
Uh, their access is not being impeded.
Excuse me?
They're gonna, they will have, they will have continued access to their property.
By way of?
And they're, they're in support of, they're in support of this, uh, subdivision as well. I don't know if you have the subdivision plan?
Yeah, if you put the, the subdivision plan, which is up, uh, shows that access easement and labels it as such to, uh, include, as stated in the note that highlights above the dotted easement, proposed access for Lot 1, Lot 1 being the Last Chance Garage, and map 138 lot 64. So that access easement serves Lot 1 also.
So they would be funneled through, uh, your property rather than onto Hill Street?
Yes, correct. Absolutely. Yep. Yes, Paul?
On that subject, is there dedicated parking or loading for Last Chance?
Yes. Any other questions? If there's no other questions, we're out of the public hearing. Okay. Is anybody here or on Zoom who wishes to speak to, for, against this application? Round one.
Good evening. Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McDonough Speed, I, Speed, Street, I'm sorry. I will be speaking twice. Um, I did want to show this to you first because it will help you to understand a lot of stuff that's going on with this lot. So if you look at the first page, it says building height. And the most confusing thing about building height in Portsmouth for most people is the mansard roof. There are two types of mansard roof. One is a flat top and one is a hip top. Peter Stith can correct me at any time. To measure the size of a building, if it has a flat-top mansard roof, you go to the very top of the building, all the way to the top of the roof, if it's a flat top. But if it's a, if it's a hip-topped mansard roof, say that five times fast, you go midway, not to the mean, but to the midway. So in order to judge that, you have to measure between the top of the building and then the roof all the way up, and then you do the math, it's a halfway point. So now that you understand that, I'd like you to look at C6. And if Peter can bring that up, that would be wonderful. And on C6, it specifically says that Building A, Building D, and Building E have a flat roof, and therefore, they have drainage put in there. Now, I am not an engineer. Some of you are, but it's my understanding that if you have a hip-top mansard, you do not need drainage on your roof because it's already angled. That's what a hip top is. It has like little angles, and therefore, the water runs off. But according to C6, which is contradict, contradictory to what they show, they're showing runoff drainage things. Wow, you can't even see that mine's small enough, but, um, they're all shown as flat-top roofs. So that's a little contradictory. Um, the other thing I wanted to just briefly go over is there's a lot of misconception going on everywhere about the new, um, SB 284, which has to do with parking. And multifamily units of 10 or more are still required to have parking as the city allotset. And that's up to 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which is not what Portsmouth does, but just so you know. And the other thing about that new law is it does not affect the guest parking or any other parking regulations that cities have. So the guest parking is still the same. Am I at my three minutes? I have five seconds left. Um, so therefore, I will be back again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else here or on Zoom wishes to speak two for against this application?
Hello, Michelle Worth, 439 Hanover Street. My husband and I drafted this letter to address some concerns. It did not get submitted on time, so I'm here to read it into the record. My husband and I agree with the current direction of the development with the relocation of the main drive entrance being opposite Pearl Street. Thank you. This should help with the traffic patterns. There is adequate, is there adequate clearance for vehicles to go downhill street side for reaching the parking in the northern corner? Is this expected to service two-way traffic? We're concerned about the number of parking spaces dedicated to the development. Adequate parking needs to be provided for all of the residential units. The parking at Rock Street Park will get sucked up by the overflow. The parking at Rock Street Park is 72-hour parking to be utilized by the neighborhood. There should probably be at least four spaces designated as two-hour parking to allow use of the park by those who decide to drive there. This development should also have some kind of pedestrian access to the Foundry Place Road to encourage overflow and guest parking to utilize the garage. The current arrangement will place more pressure on the neighborhood's limited parking. I doubt the residents will walk all the way around the block to access the garage. We believe that the new placement and reduction of the footprint of Building E has definitely helped in making it less of a wall for the development, since it is now somewhat aligns with the Pearl across the street. We do have a concern with the size of what is now designated as Building C. It is labeled in the plans as being a three-story building, similar in height to Buildings B and D. But it is shown in the elevations as three stories plus an attic, which is it? The previous application had a true three-story building on that corner, and it was a better transition to the existing two-story houses across the street. These three-story plus attic version is going to loom over the neighborhood on that corner, since the grade is already several feet above Rock Street. Building B looks lost between Buildings A and C on the Rock Street elevation. The attic story should be eliminated. And having the three buildings on the corner being roughly the same height will look much less oppressive. We still do not believe that the downtown overlay district should have been applied to Hanover Street portion of the site, which allows for the proposed increased height of Building E and now Building C. The DOD should be limited to the back portion of the site, the same as the northern incentive overlay district. The back of the 361 Hanover site does abut foundry place. And since the developers are taking advantage of that zoning, then they should have as much of the traffic that is generated by this increased density access the site via the foundry place, which is fully inside the incentive districts. The developer has been listening to the neighbors' concerns and crafting a better development. Adjusting the height of Building C, giving three stories, will make a lasting impact. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mark DiLorenzo, Director Butter, 349 Hanover Street. I wanted to talk of a few things. They mentioned well-lit, and I know that ever since the Foundry Garage went in, well-lit means I have trouble sleeping at night without a full blackout blind. The light that comes off the top two, three floors of that Foundry Garage pours right into my bedroom window. Now, right now, my windows face the parking lot. And I'm now going to have a building 47 feet tall with well-lit characteristics 15 feet away from my building. It's going to block out the sun during the day, and it's going to provide plenty of light at night. It's going to have a negative impact on my property, my property value, and my quality of life. I also wanted to touch quickly on the, what the attorney mentioned is the right to relocate the easement, which there is a document, and it absolutely states that. However, it states that as our agreement, that we give up in exchange for things that they give up. And because they gave up none of the things they committed to, we have taken them to court and are going to have this document torn up, because you don't get it where one party gives up something and the other party gives up nothing. You'll hear more about what happens when I come back in the second half. But they are also required in that same document to maintain the easement. And they have not done so. They have torn it up. They have dug up potholes. And I encourage you to walk the site. You will see the potholes they put in place, and I watched them do it with machinery. And it's to slow vehicles down coming through. But it also puts potholes in our easement, which they are required to maintain. So I'll talk to you in the second half. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak two for against this application, round one?
Hi, my name is Abby Kerschner. I'm at 7 McDonough Street. I am a parent of two young kids in the neighborhood, and when I saw the height of the Building C had changed from what I had understood, I was surprised by that. My main concern is my kids biking and scootering around on their own, and just that it's already going to be a lot more dense, which I appreciate, and that's why I chose to live in this neighborhood. But I think it's excessive and not what the neighborhood had agreed to with the transition from our neighborhood to the more urban district. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak two for against this application, which can include, by the way, the applicant? If you want, wish to speak during the public hearing, the same rules.
Robin Heslidge, 27 Rock Street. Good evening, Mr. Chellman and Planning Board members. I'm speaking tonight against the approval of the site plan for 361 Hanover Street property. When submitting a site plan review to the Portsmouth Planning Board, a project must demonstrate compliance with the city's Site Plan Review Regulations and related ordinances, ensuring it fits harmoniously into the environment while minimizing negative impacts. That last bit is why I'm here to speak with you tonight against approving this current site plan as submitted. This latest version of their design plan has intensified Building C, which was previously three stories with a mean height of 36 feet and a roof line similar to those seen in abutting properties. This newest version adds an extra story of height with the addition of the barn-like mansard roof. So now Building C looks to be as tall as the proposed Heinemann Building, that's fully four stories, and joins Building E by towering 15 to 20 feet over the top of the roofs of immediately abutting properties, negatively impacting our light and views and dramatically altering the character of our neighborhood. Building C will be an eyesore sticking out in the middle of our little neighborhood. Additionally, this application is missing very important updated renderings of streetscape views from Pearl, Hanover, Rock, and Sudbury Streets to show the true impact that this significant change and others that were made since the last time you saw this proposal's design will have on our neighborhood. This proposed development definitely does not fit harmoniously into our neighborhood, the environment of our neighborhood, which is small-scale historic neighborhood, nor does it minimize negative impacts. I ask you to postpone your review of this site plan and request that the applicant provide streetscape renderings of this latest proposed development's design so that you can fully evaluate the impact it will have on our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bryn Waldwick. I live at 30 Parker Street with my wife and two kids under three. This development is, is basically right on the path between our house and the Rock Street Park, where we spend an hour a day, like two or three times a day probably, with our kids. Our main concerns about the development from the beginning have been about safety, with, with traffic a main component of that, as well as the way that the aesthetics and the size and the density of this development fit into the immediately abutting neighborhood. You talk about the interfaces between sort of small neighborhoods and where the downtown meets those neighborhoods. This is one of those thin layers where there's, it's a street that's not even a real street. It's a small street that separates this development from the adjoining houses. A lot of what we had hoped for was that the traffic from this development could feed onto Foundry Place, which from our perspective is sort of why the zoning is the way it is, because it connects to Foundry Place. So if the cars and the traffic, and I think it's a great point that's brought up, that it, it's understood maybe it's hard to get the cars and the traffic from the development onto Foundry Place, but why is there no pedestrian access? It's made it easier for people to use the garage, which I think is the point of the garage, for people to park there and be able to, to filter into the neighborhood. And it's, it's, it's one thing to listen to people saying that. It's another thing to actually create architecture that supports those goals. And it, from our perspective, it feels like this, it's not really been done, and this plan especially does not achieve that as we've asked. They get the zoning, but they don't, they don't use the resource of Foundry Place, which is a thoroughfare where the traffic could easily go. The other, the other thing is the size and scale of the development as it relates to the surrounding neighborhood. I think Building C is, is the best example of this, that earlier in the process, it was, it, it was made smaller and it was three stories tall. And this is right across the street from colonial houses where like, you know, people, the reason why Portsmouth is great is because people maintain these old houses. And it takes, it's not like it doesn't happen magically. It's individuals who put time and then sweat into making it a great place to live because they love these beautiful old houses. And now the plan feels like there's this hulking building that's going to be one street away that is, you know, twice as many stories as these old houses. And it's, it's almost like the antithesis of complimenting what's there or, or being harmonious. A lot of what we wanted as a neighborhood was for there to be this step down between, between the, the, the part of this development that's more downtown, coming down Hanover to the smaller houses. And it feels like, as it stands, that is almost kind of went back in the other direction. So for, for that reason, I'm asking that you reject this proposal as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Into the first round?
Hi, I'm Marcie Vaughn. I live at 407 Hanover Street. And I agree with Mr. Boson. This has been quite an odyssey. I do want to correct the record on one thing he said, though. He characterized our neighborhood as people who don't like change. And that's not true. Our house, my house at 407 Hanover stood there for 250 years. And what Sean and I love about it so much is that the world has changed around it, and it stayed. We've always known that the Heinemann Lot would be developed, and we invite that. We are excited about that. The problem that has occurred here has been that the city failed to respond and respect our neighborhood's rights. So the property is improperly zoned. And I want to really acknowledge Mr. Wilson and his team for doing a lot of work to change their original plan and make it more palatable. And I appreciate that, and they've done a really good job. There are a couple of concerns that I have. Our house is the one, if you, if you don't know exactly where it is, it spans the length of Rock Street in between Sudbury and Hanover. We're right across the street. So we are that house. That's the sort of transition where there is no transition. So my two concerns are, as a number of my neighbors have said, the size of Building C. I was surprised to see this plan. It's different than what I saw before, which I supported. But this is over 20 feet above my house, really hulking down on it. And it's not a three-story anymore. So that's a concern to me. The second issue is privacy. So our property, like I said, it spans the length of those two streets. It's a full block. And what makes our house special really, and unique, and particularly valuable is that our yard is big. It's, most of our property is a yard, and it's very, very private. It's surrounded by a six-foot fence. And that's depicted in the record. There are various diagrams of our yard, various photographs of that fence. It's incredibly unique, really. And we value that privacy. And what concerns me are that there are five decks that now look in to our yard. And that privacy is going to be gone. That's going to diminish our property value significantly. And I think that this is something that boards should address, and I think I'll be back at round two to talk about that some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first round speakers?
Hi, my name is Steve Wilson. I'm the applicant. I just made a list of the things that we, some of the things we just heard here, and I'll try to bang through some of them. The first one was how you measure mansard, hip top mansard roof. We built 143 Daniel Street, Maplewood Avenue, and the conversion of the cabin building to Nova Care, they used the, we used the same methodology to measure the mansard roofs for those buildings. Those are three-story buildings with a space under the attic. So I think Peter could reassure you that that, what was said here was a complete misinterpretation of the code. And the notes to that are actually on the town map. Second item was our parking is almost 1.6 spaces per unit. So the discussion about the state statute, et cetera, we've exceeded that. Hill Street has not been noted on the plan or noted as an access or egress from our property. It's considered to be a private way, not accessible to us. The, the discussion of access to the garage from our property to get down to Foundry into the garage, we don't own any frontage on Foundry, only where the Last Chance Garage is, and that's a whole story above the street. There's no opportunity for that. But there is a pedestrian access on the side of Foundry Place, directly adjacent to our property. So if one of our customers had to get from, or guests or whatever had to get from Hill Street to Foundry, that's the pedestrian access. And you, you approved that plan, I think, for that reason. All of our buildings are three-story. The addition of the gambrel, of the gambrel roof was to try to get away from having three identical roofs in a row. It is three feet taller than the previous illustration, but it's not significant. It went from 36 to 39. I think the record would hold that out. It's also not a full story, habitable full story. It's a half-story and would have a room or bedroom in it. The DOD does not dictate elevation of buildings at all. The DOD has been relieved from the site by, by the zoning board. We went from our original proposal here, which was 52 units, down to 40 units. And the density is commensurate with everything in the neighborhood, with the exception of Robin's house. They're all, we're in the median density. These houses don't, none of them comply with the zoning. They have no land with them, and that's why they, they need us to use our parking onsite or provide more parking. So as sensitivity to that, we've provided more parking than ordinarily, so we're not competing with the spaces at the playground or in the neighborhood. So I got, I got through six. I'll be back.
Thank you. Any other first round speakers?
We can pass them if you want.
Yeah, we can pass them around here.
I can pass them to.
My name is Dale Soul, excuse me, and I'm a Director Butter at 349 Hanover. And I'm not going to believe, believe or anything. What's been said, I agree with entirely. I just want to throw a couple of numbers out for the actual heights of the buildings we're talking about. I think it's kind of interesting. According to the new, new designs, Building A, C, and D will be 48 feet 5 inches. Now, that's from the base of the building to the peak. That doesn't take into account the, the way you build it, where you don't count the attic and all that stuff that I really don't understand. That's the actual height of the building from the ground. I have, which I gave to you, worksheets that show 21 of the abutting homes in the area with an average height of 24 feet. These buildings are 48 feet 5 inches, as I said. feet, 5 inches, as I said, twice as tall as the average of 21 buildings in the neighborhood. Robin's house is 24 feet. She's going to be looking at a building that is over twice as tall as her building, as will other people. I don't think this is proper for the neighborhood. I think the heights are far too big. They'll be a huge impact on the neighborhood. If you drive up the street and it look like something that doesn't belong there, which it doesn't belong there. It's not in keeping with the character. They're just too tall. They're too big. They're too massive. And they diminish our neighborhood tremendously, I believe. I would appreciate if someone would take a look at the heights, think about it, think about what it's going to look like, think about living there, and, and see if we can't make those buildings shorter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first round speakers?
Yes, good evening. I'm Terrence Parker, landscape architect. I just want to point out that on the Rock Street Hanover corner, there's, on the city portion of it, there's a fair amount of landscape materials. It's between a power line and that, that west-facing facade of Building C. And the trees there get to be 40 or 60 feet, and some of the, the red cedars get to be, you know, 20 or 30 feet. So I'm just pointing out that there are, there are ways that we're trying to alleviate the concerns of the abutters as they look at the, the corner of Hanover and Rock Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first round speakers?
There are two people. If you're on Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand.
Last call for first round speakers. Over the first round speakers. Second round speakers.
Good evening, Elizabeth Browder, property owner, 159 McSeth, Donner Street. I would contend, I would contend that the plan set that's been presented is, does not include all the proper information that you need in order to be able to make a good decision in regards to this site plan review. First, I would submit the highlighted information about Mansard roofs and the fact that they show a flat Mansard roof as part of their plan on C6. I would also like to contend that if you look at Building A on Plan 2, A21A, which is on page 352 of the packet, that they show hip-top towers underneath the Mansard roof. Now, it's my understanding that that is going to be corrected. If they stay the way they are, it is a violation of zoning because now it's a fourth floor there. It's not part of the Mansard roof. So that's going to be adjusted, I was told, and I'd like it put into the record that that needs to be corrected on their paperwork. So that the plan set actually shows the Mansard roof going all the way to the edge and not stopping at those towers. TAC discussed many things that were brought forward in your staff memo. Hopefully, you got a chance to read them along with the other thousands of pages you had to read. One of the things that was brought forward is that there were eight guest parking spaces required for this development. The DOD, which is the Downtown Overlay District, allowed them to remove four. However, they stated on page 60 of their opening paragraphs that there are two external spaces and two internal spaces. This was the question that TAC had for you. And that is, is it okay for them to have two guest parking inside Building A? And the questions that I have for you is, will all the residents there be able to access that parking lot for their guests? And I only noticed one external parking space, and that's going to be used as a loading zone as well, which is a great idea until there's a guest there for lunch, and the prime guy shows up to deliver something, and now he's parked in the middle of the thoroughfare that people are going to be using to get back and forth from Hill Street to their thing. The other thing of concern is that these buildings are really close together. And if you look, they're between four and six feet. One of them has a little, Building C, I believe it is, has a little outhang that makes that width only about four feet wide. So although the fire department said if they sprinkled those buildings, and I don't know if they're going to do that because it doesn't, I couldn't find it in the plans, but I didn't have time to read all 600 pages or 450 pages, whatever it was. But you could never put a ladder in there to fix anything. If a window breaks, if the cat gets stuck there, if the fire department has to get up with a ladder, you are not going to get a ladder on a six-foot angle and be able to access those buildings. So that's an area of concern. It was stated, if you look at the elevations report for Rock Street on A20, A2.0, on page 351 of the packet, it shows you that there's zero elevation there. But if you stand on Rock Street and you look at the Heinemann Building, it's about three feet up to that land. They show the sidewalk being level there. So are they going to be doing some removal of land there? How are they going to make that level? The other question is, is they don't show any steps. Currently, there are steps there that go between Rock Street and their parking lot, and that would be a way that people could access Foundry Place. But they're not, they don't show any steps there at all. At least I didn't find any, but I'm not an expert in reading this. The other question is about the easement plan, which is on page 337. It shows it in blue. It shows Lot 1. Its driveway is going to come across around the corner. And when I measured it, using the interesting measurement system that I use to measure things on a computer, it's going to be less than 10 feet wide, and it's on a corner. So I'm not really sure how the cars coming out from Lot 1 are going to be able to make that corner and not drive on the neighbor's lot, for which I don't believe they have an easement. So again, you're back to the easements. So I feel strongly that they need to clean up some of their stuff in this presentation. I believe the easements are an issue, and they are something that you could say it goes on hold until that's resolved. And the other thing that I'd like to see is about a gate, a possible gate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other second round speakers?
Mark DiLorenzo, again, 349 Hanover Street, Director Abutter, Chairman Schellman, members of the planning board. Couple of concerns I have in here. For 25 years, people have driven from Hanover Street through the parking lot to Hill Street, through to Bridge Street, and vice versa, myself included. This proposed property adds 66 parking spaces, which means up to 66 vehicles will have the potential choice to enter and exit their property via Hill Street and the private way, even though no such legal easement exists, as Mr. Wilson just noted, granting them that right. However, you have two openings. And as we all know, human nature, you're going to take the path of least resistance and the quickest route to your end destination. We've done it for 25 years. No traffic studies have been conducted that even mention the existence of Hill Street. I show the diagram below on the same page, which is the traffic study, and Hill Street oddly does not even exist. So this was not taken into consideration. The developers of 361 Hanover Street have not expressed how they intend to stop their residents from traveling that route, which at the same time must remain open and available to the properties abutting them, which have been granted an easement. So that's going to be a tricky thing to figure out, but that needs to be addressed. Otherwise, you're going to have potentially 66 additional cars zipping down past Dwyer's Pub onto Bridge Street. The second item I'd like to bring up is the easement plan, as shown on page 285, which in its current definition is not acceptable. A large portion of the easement, I've dotted it as a yellow circle, for 349 Hanover Street, is missing. It needs to be added back in because you cannot drive through a six- or seven-foot area of land and not pass over that open area. So it needs to be added in so as, as is part of the turning radius of the vehicle backing out of their driveway. It appears to have been overlooked on the drawings. Additionally, as I show in red, as cars back out both from our property and from underneath the building, there exists a high risk of two vehicles on opposite sides of the fence backing out into one another due to no visibility of the other vehicle. The TAC mentioned this concern July 1st, and we're assured that it would be changed. It has not been altered. All six, all five spots in a row stay there. If you go to the next page, the original right-of-way easement provided to Hill Hanover Group LLC and also Hanover Place Condominiums, 349 Hanover Street. Insight Plan D37416 dated May 3, 2007, shows a path granting unimpeded access along the fence from Hill Street to Hanover Street. Obviously, as the parking lot for 361 Hanover Street was later developed, the curbs were added, the parking spaces alongside Hanover Street were added. That had to be altered. So the easement path, as the document stated, was altered, and the path now shows what I show here in yellow. That is the current easement path we have been granted. It has been this way for over 20 years. If you go to the next page, in the amended easement agreement reached at the emergency injunction hearing on May 21, 2025, you were sent this document a few days ago by Attorney John Lyons. It was signed and agreed by both parties, Mr. Forsley was one of the signatories, as was I, that number three, the defendant shall not degrade, alter, or diminish the pavement in the claimed easement from its current condition. And that is the current claimed easement. Number five, no party shall park or obstruct the claimed easement during the pendency of this lawsuit. This was approved and so ordered by the Honorable David R. Roof on July 14, 2025. This has been entered into law. If you go to the next page, when you overlay the claimed easement as agreed upon, with the new construction drawings, you can see that no development or equipment and materials of development for Building E and possibly Building D can occur in the area shown below until at least 15 months from now, as the trial is currently set to begin after November 2, 2026. I therefore recommend that the planning board put on this project on hold until such time as the trial is resolved, as no construction can be done in that area. They have signed an agreement stating they will not. Thank you for your time. Any questions you have of me?
We don't do questions during public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other second round speakers?
Okay, so I added a few more comments here. Steve Wilson, one of the co-owner of the property. Bill, as I said earlier, Building C has gone from a roof height of 36 feet, measured to the mean elevation of the roof to 39 feet. So it has been increased 39 feet. It's still well under what, what is allowed in the district. It's the Rock Street Foundry Place pedestrian exit I already mentioned. The degradation of the hot top and the parking lot is twofold. We dug some test pits in the parking lot and backfilled them, and so there's some shallow potholes there. I drive through them every day. There's, there's many opportunities to get around the potholes. We haven't blocked off any of the driveway. And since I'm talking about the potholes in this lawsuit, the lawsuit claims that the other three buildings on Hill Street have access through our property, which is untrue. When I bought the property, it had no through-traffic signs displayed on the end of the building. It still does. The shortcut from Dwyer's Pub to Hanover Pearl Street is the shortcut that everybody's shooting for. It, there are people coming through there. We have no right to go the other way. We intend to install signs that, that preclude our residents from driving down that way. The, the agreement that we came up was not, was not an emergency injunction. We disagreed not to diminish their ability to drive through relating to the existing easement. And the existing easement, we will not, we will enforce. They'll be able to come through the property. Our site plan doesn't diminish that pre-or-post construction. And the, the corner of the building that the TAC was talking about was the other corner of the building, not this one. There's plenty of site distance to back out of our garages safely into a 22 or 24-foot-wide travelway. Unless somebody's driving recklessly, there should not be a problem. None was cited by the TAC. The driveway from Lot A is 14 feet wide at its narrowest point, not 10 feet, it's 14 feet. You can see it on the plan. It's served as the driveway for that building for a long time. And if we can't get that driveway through there, how do we get the condo people drive through there? Are they better drivers or, or just special? And we, we've had no problem with our neighbors until they joined this frivolous, what I call a frivolous lawsuit. It's, and it's an attempt to defer the project. And I think Attorney Boson has spoken to that. These buildings are significantly lower than the code allows. We have tried to terrace the property down to the existing neighborhood. And the selective measurement of buildings, yeah, a lot of the houses in the Rock Street neighborhood are 24, 26, 28. They're not all 24. But the house across the street from the intersection of Rock Street is probably 34 feet. The Pearl is 40-something feet. The building where they live, the person who was giving this information, is 36 feet, just about the same distance as measured as our Building E. So, so I think it's a misrepresentation of this. So thank you very much, and I hope you won't let this inaccurate information stand in the way of what I think is a very good project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcie Vaughn, 407 Hanover. And I, I will second what Mr. Wilson said. There's a lot about this project that's really good, I think. I think they've done a really good job on a lot of aspects of it. The two things that I mentioned before, though, I do want to revisit. The first is the height of Building C. I don't know all these like fancy measuring things you guys do, but it's 48 feet. That's like the way it measures from the bottom to the top. And it's 20 feet taller than my house, which is right across the street. And it's different than what it was in the last plan. And I, I'm confused by that, and I think that should be addressed. The second issue is the privacy. Five balconies peering into my yard. The landscape architect mentioned trees growing to 50 or 60 feet, which would be fantastic, but I will be dead by the time a tree grows to 50 feet across the street from my house. Let's face it. And so what I'm asking for tonight is that if the board does grant this approval, that you do so on a conditional basis. And that that conditional basis take into consideration the height of the building across the street from my house and the impediments to my privacy. You have the authority to do that under RSA 676-4, authority to grant conditional approval. You have authority to require measures that guard abutters, like me, against nuisances. That's RSA 674-44. And then I believe, under Section 1.1E of our site plan regulations, you have a duty to impose conditions that protect my privacy, that protect against nuisances. So I don't know precisely what those conditions would be, but obviously, they should be measurable, and they should be precise, and they should be designed to protect privacy, and tailor this project a little more accurately to the property directly across the street where I live. And again, I do want to reiterate, I really acknowledge the great work they've done. But I live there too, and you have a duty to protect us from nuisances. I hope you'll do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other second round speakers?
Hello, Brynn Waldwick. I live at 30 Parker Street. I just wanted to briefly address the idea that the, the neighbors fear change or, or sort of like, you know, questioning the motivations behind why we're all here speaking to this project. I, I think like whether we, whether we fear change or not, it I think like whether we fear change or not, it feels like change comes for us all when you live in Portsmouth. I trust many of you have walked around this neighborhood. And I think it's safe to say that close to downtown, we probably have borne the brunt of development that's been taking place over the last five or so years, which is all that I can speak to, because that's as long as I was here. But there's been numerous developments, very large buildings that didn't look like anything that was there before. And that's not even talking about the parking garage that was there. That sounds like it was a whole saga or odyssey or whatever you want to call it. I wasn't even here for that, but it's, it sounds like it was exciting. But it's, there's sort of only so much you can do before it undermines what's already there and the reason why people want to live here and the reason why I moved here or the reason why my neighbors moved here. And I think, I mean, we've all been to countless of these meetings. I've been to several, my wife has been to several, and most of the people speaking have been to that number combined. And it's not because we fear change, it's because we care about the neighborhood and it's important to us. And it feels like, it's a little hard to know what to do, because at this point, it feels like we're almost negotiating against ourselves, because all of a sudden, Building C is not what it was before. I feel like it was sort of getting to something where there were these lower townhouses that fit a little bit more with the surroundings. And what we all wanted was a step down from the downtown look and feel, like on Maplewood, all the way down to basically Rock Street. And now it feels like we're sort of rat-holing into this Building C of how tall it is. But the only reason that is even happening is because it was changed from what it was a few meetings ago, where we were all spending all this time putting all of our care into talking about what's important to us about the neighborhood. All that to say, I mean, I just don't think it should be accepted as it is, because I don't think it respects the neighbors, it respects sort of what is good for the neighborhood, and I don't think it's sort of sending this area of the city in the right direction if you can sort of build whatever you want without any attention to what's around. And I think that's what the neighbors are trying to speak about. It's not about that we fear change, it's just that we want something that is sustainable and sort of fits the template of what the neighborhood could be in the future. Like, these aren't going to be units that are, it's more housing, but it's probably going to be a lot of speculators that buy houses like that. And that's not really what is going to be good for us. It's not going to feel like a neighborhood, it's just going to feel like an investment opportunity. And I think that's what most of us are trying to say. And we thank you for all your hard work, too. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other second round speakers? Going to close the second round. Any third round speakers?
Marky Lorenzo, 349 Hanover Street. I need to correct one statement. Mr. Wilson just stated, quote, "It wasn't an emergency injunction." That is a lie. This man has a problem with honesty periodically, which is why the neighbors are upset. We can't trust a thing out of their mouth. So I'm happy to share the court documents with you, where it states "emergency injunction." If you'd like, please let me know. I will email it to Mr. Stiff. I will show you the court ruling, the documents, anything you need, but I can't allow lies to go unanswered.
Any other third round speakers? Last call. Any other third round speakers? Going to close the public hearing? Board discussion?
Yes, Bill.
I'd like to ask Peter, as a matter of fact, to confirm that the, to confirm that the buildings, as shown to us tonight, conform to the zoning requirements for lots that they're on?
And that they were in front of TAC?
That they conform to the zoning requirements in terms of height.
Do you have a hand up?
Yeah.
Sorry.
The site plan approval, there's recommended conditions of any easement plans and deeds be recorded at the Registry of Deeds by the city or as deemed appropriate by the Planning Department. Any easements, plans, and deeds. Are those just, are we talking about those granted to the city? Because we are going to need those to access some of the infrastructure and so forth.
Right. Those will be those types. Sometimes there are also private easements that go along with developments, and we ensure that those are recorded as well.
Okay. So if for some reason those weren't the site plan approval, what happens?
Well, those easements would be tied to the site plan approval. I mean, if the easements aren't, if we don't record the easements, then the site plan won't get recorded. Those have to be executed before we record the site plan, and then it all gets recorded together.
And this could happen post-construction?
No, that happens before the building permits issued.
Okay.
So all these, unless the condition specifically says, like, before a CO, that can happen later, but the conditions precedent to issuing a building permit have to be satisfied prior to a building permit being issued.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Bill.
Am I also right that if we did this with a condition of approval or some such phraseology that related to the easement, that that essentially puts it off till the court can make such a determination?
Such a condition could be crafted. It would be a really bad idea. It's not our purview. We have an application that's been presented to us with representation. There's a discussion, an argument in court about what's been done to it and what may happen to it in the future. But they are showing what they represent to us, which is what we have to act on, an easement that they've relocated. It provides access for Lot 1, it provides access for the condominium next door, to the way they've shown it. If you don't like the way it's been shown because of a truck access issue or something like that, please say something. But, you know, the fact that there is an agreement endorsed by the court means it is a binding agreement, but also these things, there could be a settlement before November, you know, the end of 2026. Those things, that happens as well. It may not be a settlement. It may blow things up, you know? That's the nature of litigation. But in terms of what we have in front of us, I think we have enough to act. Now, how the board feels about it is how the board feels about it. I'm not trying to sway the board on that issue, but it's not something, we're not judges, so. Yes, Joe?
Well, how I feel about it is, every application that we see has easements shown that are assumed to be successful at some point. We see easements all of the time, proposed on plans on almost every project that we look at. If any project that comes before us is unsuccessful in getting that easement, it stops the project.
It's not just easements. It can be any representation made to this board. There was an application, I won't talk about it in particular, but there was a deed covenant that came up at the meeting that was of a concern, that was said it wasn't a concern. It turns out it was a concern.
Right.
And it had to be dealt with. If Mr. Shagnon shows a property line and a neighbor, even not at this meeting, turns out they think they own a 15-foot strip that goes through the lot that he missed, well, that can get litigated and that could affect an approval. But we have to act on what's been represented to us.
Agreed.
Logan?
I just had a couple of things I wanted to note. First, with respect to lighting, we've got a really detailed plan here, and I think I have all the answers in what I'm seeing, but, you know, there's like a detailed layout of all the foot candles on the plan. We've got a lot of details about the lighting being shielded from uplighting, dark sky compliance, et cetera. And maybe just a note, not an additional requirement, but some of the neighbors pointed out, they were concerned about lights into their window. I think some of the dark sky compliance and shielding answers that, but it's maybe not as obvious as, say, the sheet C7, the lighting plan, showing the light levels at ground level. So maybe just something to consider for future applications or for this going forward, making it more obvious how that lighting would apply to someone not standing on the pavement. And another, just kind of a note, I know in previous, I think, design consultations that were public hearings, there was a mention of this whole sidewalk getting to Foundry Place and the fact that the city of Portsmouth owns this weird U-shaped little bit of land. Maybe a suggestion to the city. I know they recently put in a sidewalk to my neighborhood, which I greatly appreciate and has helped our little neighborhood out quite a bit. You know, obviously there is access to Foundry Place by going out and around, but to the point that someone made, a direct path is generally easier if the city were able to find some sort of way to put a pathway directly through this, what appears to be relatively useless piece of land, to Foundry Place that might help everyone out in the neighborhood, the applicant, the neighbors, et cetera. Just a thought. Nothing the applicant can do about that, obviously, but perhaps something that the city could look at to enable the neighborhood to better use their space.
Part of the history of this project, we did have a sidewalk, I think, before you came on, I believe.
Yes, yeah.
And there's quite a grade change out back.
There'd have to be steps or something. Oh, there's a retaining wall there, right?
There's the retaining wall that needs help back there. And as I understand it, there's a lot of utilities in the ground at that location as well. So it's not easy. You know, we did look at that when we were on-site, talked about it.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, if the retaining wall, in fact, does need some sort of reconstruction in the near future, perhaps that could be incorporated.
I get your point. It's not low-hanging fruit, from what I...
Oh, no. No, I mean, even from the utility plan here, you can see how busy it is, so.
Any other? We have two things. We have a two-lot subdivision, and then we have a site plan. Do you want to proceed with the subdivision first?
Make a motion to vote, find the subdivision application meets the requirements set forth in the subdivision regulations and adopt the findings of facts as presented.
Second. Discussion on the findings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, a motion, we vote to grant the preliminary and final subdivision approval with the following stipulations, 2.1, 2.2, and 2.3.
Discussion.
I don't think there's any concern about the subdivision portion of this specifically.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we want to make a motion to discuss details? Here are your options. You can vote to proceed to approve it, you can vote to deny it, you can vote to postpone it, if there's a reason to do so. But we can't do nothing. That is actually statutorily not allowed.
Mr. Chairman, I motion, we vote to find that the site plan application meets the requirements set forth in the site plan regulations, Section 2.9 evaluation criteria, and adopt the findings of facts as presented.
Right, second.
Discussion on the findings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Findings are adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we vote to grant the site plan approval with the following conditions, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, and 2.7.
I think there were some neighborhood points made tonight. I just want to say, I know there's been some talk about changing the zoning, a lot of talk about it, and there were discussions some years ago. I'm not sure what happened, those discussions. We are bound by the regulations in place. And some of the issues that were brought up, if there was a true, something that rose above the requirements of zoning, there is some authority to do things, but I personally don't see that. I appreciate the neighborhood's concerns, but based on the zoning, I think it complies. That's my personal opinion.
Any discussion?
That's my opinion as well, Chairman.
I'd also say that one of the conditions being the construction management plan, I mean, that's going to be key. As the neighborhoods pointed out, this has a big impact on them, and I think honestly the installation, if it were to go forward, would be maybe the most difficult portion. So adherence with those conditions would be vital.
I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would folks like to have a 10-minute break?
Yes, please.
Let's have a 10-minute break.
Let's have a 10-minute break.[400.27]
And then the front half of the site will, will surface runoff into this four bay and then into the rain garden. All of the flows for the site are being reduced and they will discharge onto the existing onsite drainage system, which then eventually thro- flows through the parcel and discharges out to the northeast behind the existing shopping center. The next sheet is our utility plan. We have our water and gas connections coming off of Woodbury Ave. We're connecting our sewer to the city sewer main that runs through the plaza and then electric will be served overhead across Woodbury and then underground from there into the As part of the development site conditional use permit, we are required to provide 10% community space over the entire property. So this plan is a permitting level easement plan, so this will be converted to a recordable easement plan upon our hopeful approval this evening and will be recorded for community space on the site. The entire parcel is, is just under 19 acres, so this represents almost two acres of community space area on the parcel. Further in the packet, we have a, a plan that depicts how we intend to improve these spaces to meet the community space definition of, of park area. So we have a couple seating areas that are proposed around the existing Wendy's facility. We have a few walking paths and benches along this front area, along Woodbury, and then an additional seating area up to the south end of the site here by Market Basket. As part of the submission package, we had also included a traffic study, which is a requirement under the drive-through conditional use permit. And then we also included some architectural renderings. Our architecture team is here if there is any questions in regards to the, the building or the landscaping plan, which they, they also prepared as part of this package. And that is all I have, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions to the applicant?
Can you go into a bit more detail about the community space and how it's going to be welcoming and useful as community space?
Sure. Yeah, there we go, Peter. Thank you. So there's a, there's a, there's a few different areas within, within the larger site that have, have been designated as community space and we've, we've looked to program each of them when these sort of blowups show the, the various areas. So around the, the, this is the existing Wendy's building and we have a couple seating areas that have been, have been programmed here. One in this corner with a couple picnic tables and some, some landscaping. And then this sort of entrance lawn area, we've added a, a walking path with some seating benches and some additional landscaping as well. Same thing to the south of the bank here. We've added a couple of sidewalk or connections to the existing sidewalk out of Woodbury through the site and another small seating area. And then over here by Market Basket is a, a larger, a larger space with a few picnic tables that, that could be used for, you know, people who go buy lunch at, at Market Basket and be able to use that area as a seating area.
As follow-up, is there any chance you might want to do a bit more screening, especially where the Wendy's is along Woodbury Ave? It seems like it would be a little more inviting if there was a little more sort of screening of greenery or something going along the street?
Yeah. Peter, could you go to the next sheet, I believe it is? So this is hard to see, but the, this is sort of a key plan of, of this, of this landscaping and the existing vegetation to remain is, is circled in blue. So these, that tree, that tree, a couple of these are, are existing vegetation and then the, I believe that's a yellow key are all new plantings. So there are three new plantings along the corner there. There's, there's a smaller ring of plantings around this seating area. And then same thing around the entrance here. These, these trees on the corner and then down the streetscape of the bank is all, is all new planting. And then same thing, this corner, these three trees are new. These are existing groves of trees. So we have added new landscaping to intersperse with the existing landscaping that's already there.
Okay. I still think there could be more, but that's just me.
And we are providing almost two acres of landscaping for a development site that is under an acre just by the nature of having a 20 acre parcel.
But this is a 19 acre parcel that's been basically not taken care of very well for a very long time, so you need to kind of do that now.
Your, your entrance at, at Commerce Way and the restaurant lounge building there, was that considered as a potential site for the bank?
If it was, it was before I was involved with this project.
Seems to me that, you know, we have this nice grassy area in front of the plaza and I don't know what that used to be. That predates me, that, that old.
Schoolhouse Restaurant? Oh, it's still live. Yeah, the Schoolhouse Restaurant.
Schoolhouse Restaurant? Yeah, that's part of this property, right? Old, same address, right? That really seems to like, something needs to happen there desperately in a, you know, to your point of property that really has not been kept up very well. And in addition, your, your traffic flows at the Market and Woodbury intersection, that, that entrance way there, especially for people trying to leave out of your parking lot, that the traffic flows are, well, they just don't exist really. Like, has there, any thought at all given to improvements that could be made there?
Not as part of this project, no.
Could you talk about the pedestrian circulation a little bit, Neil? I know on a pad project, it's, this is classic pad design. I'm, I don't know if you're seeing, I'm seeing more pedestrian accidents in facilities like this and you've got a, from the south, you've got that nice sort of park-like effect with the pedestrian access. I, I can't tell what's coming to parking space or into your dumpsters or?
Yeah, so it, it kind of comes in next, next to the, next to the, or on the site side of the dumpsters. And then we have, we do have a sidewalk connection out from the existing sidewalk on Woodbury into the site, but the, the remainder of this pad site is, is really self-contained. We, we feel we're providing enough parking within this pad area for the people that are going to the bank.
How about people parking in the big parking lot to the east? Just striping a crosswalk or something or two for the?
Yeah, I, I don't think we'd be opposed to, to doing something like that.
I think that might be a good idea. It's a simple idea just because people will walk over. I know a lot of, and certainly most of the business will be drive-up, but you may get some folks walking over and ought to be a little bit more organized than it is because I know it's, especially that outer circulation, as Paul was saying, from the Woodbury entrance down, a little bit of a speedway sometimes.
Yeah, and I mean, we, we are, you know, thankfully, we're, we're this, we're our, our entrance, you know, our main entrance and exit, we are sort of close to what is a, I guess a three-way stop, so people already within the plaza have to stop, so that, that helps there as well. But I think it's a, it's a good point about pedestrian crossing from, from the plaza. And like I said, I don't, I don't think we'd be opposed to adding a crosswalk there.
The pedestrian circulation inside the site is a little problematic, but it's, it's small and certainly no room for people to get driving quickly, so I'm not sure what you could do other than provide a, a connection, an actual pedestrian connection across, maybe from your north entrance or something, but I don't feel strongly about it. I just noticed it. But the connection, just striping a pedestrian crossing, I think it's your, maybe the southerly, because that way, if you did it to the southerly one, then people were using the green space if they do, then they could at least make connection back up to, go to Petco wherever else they're going.
Yep.
And back and forth.
I'm a little, that connection from the Woodbury sidewalk, it kind of, it's that quarter of a circle that just ends at the roadway, which would be, I'm guessing, the entrance, but there's not like a walkway on the other side. So are people just walking into the road? I guess I'm not sure why you have that walkway if it doesn't actually really go anywhere. Realistically, you're not going to go from Woodbury, walk in a half, a quarter of a circle just to get to that kind of entrance or entrance and exit to the parking lot where there's going to be more traffic than going kind of just straight up if you're trying to get to the stores up there. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
Logistically, it just, it almost looks like it was added there to look pretty and doesn't actually have a pedestrian in mind.
You're right. It probably does make, would make more sense to extend it up so that if anyone walks up there, that they'd be able to cross up into the plaza as opposed to, like you said, sort of ending almost mid, mid driveway. But yeah, that's, that's a, that's a fair point and I think that'd be, be a good change to, to actually bring it to that corner to allow that access into the, into the plaza.
Any other questions or comments to the applicant?
Can I ask a question?
You just did. Want to ask another one?
Yeah. Neil, I just wanted to ask about or, or clarify some of the improvements to community space that are going to be made by Citizens Bank and then others by the property owner? Is that?
I don't, I don't know what they, their actual agreement is if, or if it's even been worked out yet, but it will be either the property, it will likely be the property owner, I would think, but. Yeah, yeah. So the property owner will be making all these improvements.
And then I just wanted to ask about the area by the schoolhouse.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you're in excess of the requirement. What, what was the plan for this like triangle here? Or can that be removed? Or do you have flexibility to remove that if you, if not needed?
Yeah, I, I, I think if, if, as long as those other three areas get us there, I think, I think we would be fine removing that. It's, it's a kind of odd piece of land just sitting over there.
Any other questions or comments?
In this kind of map, I see there are trees, but have you guys made decisions on like what types? Because to Beth's point, I'm not going to sit on those picnic benches next to Woodbury Ave eating my, you know, Wendy's if everyone can see me and you've got all that exhaust, like it just doesn't, but if the trees are something that's more full, then maybe it provides some privacy.
Hi, Matt Silva is, is about, is about an associate. So, yeah, we have made some decisions regarding that. So the area that you're talking about with Wendy's, the one over that's to the planned west, those are intended to be something a little bit lower. So what we're trying to aim to do is not provide full enclosures or anything. We know security is a very big concern, at least with citizens, so we want to maintain vision lines across all locations. So this is really just meant to be something that's like 24 to 36 inches high at most. If that's the only area that you're asking about.
I guess, are you providing community space if the community doesn't want to use it because it's not designed well, is my ultimate question?
Fair.
Which is the same with like that side, that pedestrian access. It's great that you're providing pedestrian access, but as someone who walks everywhere, I am not going to.
Right.
That's not the way I would go. It would not be safest for me. So I guess it's great that you're providing extra community space, but if it's not designed in a way that the community can actually use it, then are you actually providing community space?
And that's something that we can definitely revisit with the owner in terms of screening and I'm already sketching some ideas based on our conversation here for how we can react to that too. So it's definitely good comment, so thank you.
Any other questions or?
Can I ask one more?
You're hiding again.
He leans forward. I don't know where to go. Get your attention. I just want to make sure that the owner of the entire lot, probably not the bank lot, I'm assuming will be responsible for maintaining all of the rain gardens and detention areas and all that, because there's a lot of maintenance that goes along with those.
I, I would, I would believe so.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's truly out there, like, because I have a feeling that, you know, the bank's not going to care or take care of them, so the owner of the property really needs to. And I just want to make sure it was put out there that, that would be their requirement.
You put it out there. Andrew.
Just to jump in the bandwagon here for you, Neil. It has nothing to do with the site. I think all of the comments have been appropriate and I think it's a great high exposure, great visibility spot for the bank. Ultimately, you have a flat roof on something that it has no coverage over it, so it seems like a great candidate for some solar panels.
Idea.
I, I'm not sure if they've looked into that. I, I don't know what the.
Well, you, you included a green building statement and it just seems like a begging for me to make a comment about solar panels, so that's my only comment, otherwise it's great.
You're not even a solar guy.
I'm sure you would correct me on it.
Any other comments, questions? It's not your hand, it's just, you're just, the iPad.
Sorry, yes. I was making a little.
All right. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
For open public hearings, anybody here or on Zoom who wishes to speak two for against this application? Anybody on Zoom?
Ratings are.
Last call. Anybody here or on Zoom wish to speak two for against this application? Can we close the public hearing?
Since no one else is jumping in, beginning with the development site, I vote to find the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in section 10.5B11 and 10.5B73 and adopt the findings effect as presented.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'll continue to vote, uh, vote to grant the conditional use permit for the development site.
Second.
Yes.
I was just going to say, I mean, it is a rather large lot, so having more than one principal building makes more sense. In fact, I think even having more buildings and getting rid of some of that extra parking lot that's never used would be great too. So I have no problems with having more than one principal building on a 19 acre lot.
It's a net benefit too. I think it's going to look really nice, especially with some of the comments tonight with the landscaping and whatnot. I think it's going to be a great value add to that thing.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And I will continue to vote to find the conditional use permit application meets the criteria set forth in section 10.243 and to adopt findings effect as presented.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And I'll continue to vote to grant the conditional use permit for accessory drive-through facility.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
I'm very pleased that they put the drive-through not on the Woodbury side because I think that it could be annoying to the people sitting at the light, listening to transactions and whatnot going on. So I'm glad the side they put it on, otherwise I might have a little more heartache about it, so I'm very pleased with its location.
Any more elements and structures in the plaza throughway itself, I think is a value add because of safety, but because the change will happen, obviously there may be more stop signs or signage in general, so hopefully that people adapt and recognize the change and there are no issues.
Going to have a drive-through. This is a spot 4-1.
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
All right. We will continue. I will make a motion that we vote to find that the site plan application meets requirements set forth in site plan regulations, section 2.9 evaluation criteria, and adopt the findings effect as presented.
Second.
Was that a second?
There was like a couple of them.
And a third.
Second, second.
Hands in the way.
Yeah, they don't want to talk as much, but they'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
All right. Now, I'm going to make a motion to grant the site plan approval with the following conditions. There is 2.1 through 2.4 that are subsequent, 2.5 and 2.6 that are, oh no, precedent that says subsequent, that's why I said that. Precedent and then subsequent for 2.5, 2.6. And I am going to look for the, oh, wait for a second.
Second.
Thank you. I would like to add a stipulation and I'm thinking it's going to be precedent because I do think it's a good idea to move the end of that sidewalk to not be into the busy intersection where people are coming and going, but to move it to go towards the plaza instead, so to curve that in that direction and that would actually get anyone on the outside road sidewalk into the plaza. So I think that's a really good change. And yeah, I don't think that the community space by the schoolhouse building is at all useful as well. So if it is not needed, I would rather it be taken out this time and thought again when they redevelop that section of this lot. So those are my two added stipulations if the second agrees.
I'm going to strike a crosswalk on, by the south entrance.
By the south entrance. Strike the, say that again? I didn't hear you.
Strike a crosswalk by the south entrance. I discussed that with.
Oh, oh, oh. Yes, that, to do crosswalks into the plaza. Yep, yep, that can be added.
Let me just confirm where.
Well, I know we wanted to put one right where I just moved the sidewalk. Are you talking there or someplace else?
South on the site. Strike the south.
So both sides? No?
For both sides. Details worked out with staff.
Okay, yeah. Add a stipulation for some crosswalks to be worked out with staff where it makes the most sense for pedestrian use. I, I was thinking flow, but couldn't come up with the word. Flow, I think flow is right.
The only other thing people talked about was landscaping. Are we good with landscaping? I am, but you had a concern about it.
Well, I just thought sometimes you can put some grasses, you know, like right along the edge of the road that would make it seem a little less, a little more of a private community space, but if everyone else is fine with it, I guess I'll stop complaining.
I, I would agree that the, the existing picnic area does not seem adequately screened to be very useful. It's right by, I mean, it's on a busy road, so there's not much you can do about that, but I couldn't see myself sitting there without a little more buffer.
Right, so that's what I was thinking, like, you know, they just grow those grasses that can be like three feet high. They sometimes add a fair amount of privacy if you do them sort of correctly in a planting along the edge of the road. And that way, there'd even be a buffer between the sidewalk there, but if we don't hope.
Advocate could work with the planning department to.
A little more buffer.
Enhance the landscaping plan?
Yeah, just to give a little more buffer from pedestrian and resting community spaces and the roadway.
To me, what looks so inviting to that area is the grass. I mean, people like to sit out on the grass. There's, there's a vast amount of grass there that's.
The geese like it a lot.
It's really, I mean, that alone to me is special, but the paths are certainly enhancing all of it, I, I think. I think it's great.
So does everybody understand what we are doing here?
Yes, we've added like four different things. But Peter's writing them all down, so I know he's got them. My second Beth's motion. And you add like all the additions? Yes. Okay, we're good.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is requested city enforcement's owner for property located at 35 Sherburne Road requesting review of, excuse me, review of site plan review and conditional use permit applications within the highway noise overlay district for recommendation to the city manager for the construction of 127 workforce housing units in three buildings, including demolition of the rear gym of the school and converting the remaining structure into eight units. Construction of a four-story 90-unit building, construction of a three-story 29-unit building and associated site improvements, including utilities, lighting, landscaping, stormwater, parking and access. This property is on assessors map 259 lot 10 and lies in the municipal M district. Who is here to present this application?
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Andrea Pickett and I am representing, or one of the representatives of the PHA this evening. It's very exciting to be here. We are moving forward with a project that has been in motion and evolved and a part of for quite some time. We've been through community input and incorporated the feedback that we've received and our team has concentrated on the physical design and layout to ensure compatibility with the surrounding uses, safe access, adequate parking and thoughtful landscaping. With me this evening, we have a very dedicated team of design professionals. We have Corey Caldwell and Jack McTeague of TF Moran Civil Engineers, Sarah Addick of MSA Architects, Todd Schaefer, who is with SRW Environmental Consulting, and Mark Lentz, our facilities director. Craig Welch would have been here this evening, but he is bringing his son to college, so I hope we can give him a, a pass. He sends his regards. And with that, I will pass it on to our professionals. Corey, would you like to come up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Corey Caldwell from TF Moran. Submitted with this application, this 38 sheet set of drawings for a site plan review and conditional use permit for this project is a drainage memo done by TF Moran, a schedule that we put together explaining some of the differences between projects one and project two, letter of authorization, a green statement provided by TF Moran, which talks about some of the green building components, a traffic impact and access study prepared by TF Moran, a noise assessment report prepared by SRW Environmental Consulting, the results of the New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau regarding the data check, email from the fire department accepting revised changes to our landscape design, a three days monitoring of speed limits on Sherburne Road prepared by Precision Data Industries, our site development plans, floor plans and elevations prepared by Market Square Architects. We provided also some landscape plans for projects one and two in color format. We provided some open space plans in color format for projects one and two. There is a full drainage analysis submitted, an environmental review assessment, existing sewer flow assessment, a geotechnical report and water hydrant flow tests. Now, all these reports and studies have been reviewed by the technical advisory committee and demonstrate the abundance of information and studies completed for this project to date. Prior to meeting with this board, we've had three community outreach meetings in this room. We've had a work session with the technical advisory committee in May of this year and a formal TAC meeting in July. At each of these meetings, we received feedback and suggestions which we've incorporated into our design and in our opinion, this has significantly improved this project. The Portsmouth Housing Authority plans to construct workforce housing units on city-owned property via partnership outlined in a land use compliance agreement. I believe that relevant excerpts from this agreement have been included in the staff memo and in your packets. Our application proposes the construction of 127 workforce housing units in two separate projects. This will be accomplished by saving the front third of the Sherburne School, also known as the Robert J. Lister Academy. The front portion of the school is saved to preserve the historic charm of the property. We're able to build 127 units on this property, yet maintain the appearance of a historical school. And this is accomplished by utilizing the unique grades of the site. Peter, if you could pull up the architectural plans that we submitted, sheet nine, there is a rendering that shows the front portion of the school to be preserved and how you see the back units. And the purpose of this rendering is to demonstrate how we're able to mask a lot of these units. I think you go, yeah, just a couple more. They were in the architectural plans, which I believe was item 09, and as Peter's looking for that, I'll, I'll continue. Sherburne Road at the location or at this frontage is between elevation 60 and 67. It gradually rises as you approach the bridge over 95 to elevation 67. The floor elevation of the school is at elevation 68. The floor elevation of the school is at elevation 68. The property behind the school drops to elevation 54, which is 14 feet below the floor level of the school. By placing the majority of the units behind the school building and at a lower elevation, much of the multi-unit buildings are masked by the school. A rendering of this view is provided, which Peter is diligently looking for, and I'll continue as he searches for that. And apologies, Peter, if it wasn't readily, readily available. There was a lot of information submitted. I think there was a list of 15 different items, and this would be under the architectural plans. Due to funding, all 127 units cannot be built at once, therefore Page 342. Again, due to funding, we're breaking this into two projects. Funding for the first project, which is a 90-unit building, four-story 90-unit building, would be constructed at the rear of the site with parking, access, playground, and landscaping around this building.
We had that at the end of the packet.
I'm not seeing it.
I think it's page 1,016 of our combined packet for what it's worth.
All right, let me have that.
There's a couple.
Page 1,057.
Oh, the combined side.
I have like a 1,012, 1,011.
Oh, sorry, 1,011, yeah. It's in the thousands.
It's in the thousands.
Yeah, there's probably not many applications where there were 1,000 pages, but this has had a lot of studies.
Well, it's our entire package is over 1,000 pages, so when our entire package is, we're trying to tell them where it isn't there.
Yours is half of that.
They're sorry, 1, 1, 0.
It's, it's a kind of an important component, because when you think of that many units on a site, the mind jumps to visual massing of buildings, but as you drive Sherburne Road, what you really see mainly is the preservation of the front of the academy building.
Is the page on that one?
Peter, I think it's just a couple more pages. There we go, down.
It's the lower picture. That's the problem, it's on the same page.
There it is, right there. So that's the view you see from, from Sherburne Road, and you can see there's actually 127 units on this property, yet as you drive into the site and you drive Sherburne Road, what you mainly see is the academy. And that, again, is due to this drop in elevation. We're allowed to put these units behind the school and at a lower elevation than the school. Again, project one is in the very rear of the site, and that's a four-story 90-unit building. It has parking, access via two access points. There is a southerly access point that you're looking at here, and if, Peter, you could go to the colored plan that we provided, which is up just a few more pages. It shows the two access points. Those are on the civil plans, just a few more. There we go.
It's after the, yeah, because I just found it.
Sorry, Peter, I'm going the wrong direction for you.
I'll go past that by a few.
There it is, right there. You can see the four-story 90-unit building is shown as the orange in the back, and that sits at an elevation of 10 to 14 feet lower than the front of this site. There's a southerly two-way entrance off of Sherburne Road and a northerly one-way access and egress on the northerly part of Sherburne Road. The two-way traffic is done to the 90-unit building. It's, it's done for two reasons. Actually, it's, it's two-way traffic into, you reach the 90-unit building, and then it converts to one-way traffic around the 90-unit building, open northerly access. And this is done for two reasons. First, it allows for occupants parking in the front 43 spaces to return to Sherburne Road without traversing through the site and around the building. And secondly, it provides community parking for the amenities, which can be accessed on that southerly entrance where most of the amenities are up front, and then they can return via that entrance without having to traverse through the site and interrupting any pedestrian flow of the building occupants. The 90-unit building requires 120 spaces per the Portsmouth zoning ordinance, and we're providing 124 spaces. Additionally, project one includes sidewalks from Sherburne Road to the front and back of the 90-unit building and to the back and sides of the academy building, and those are shown with the, with the gray hatching. There are two bike storage racks proposed as part of project one. The first is at the southerly side of the 90-unit building, and the second bike storage area would contain a bike repair station, and is proposed at the easterly side of the 90-unit building on the edge of the pavement, almost at the easterly terminus at the site. Project one requires the installation of underground electric, water, sewer, and gas as shown on sheet C09, which is a utility plan provided in colors. Underground electric, water, and gas would be trench from Sherburne Road. Sewer, shown in green on that utility plan, would be trench to the 90-unit building to Greenland Road. Drainage for project one is depicted on sheet C06. There are a series of catch basins, yard drains, roof leaders that convey stormwater to four storm tech chamber systems where stormwater is treated and allowed to infiltrate. These storm tech chamber systems are all underground, so when you go on site, you won't see them. The first three are under the paved parking or access areas. The first one is to the north of the 90-unit building. The second stormwater treatment area is to the east of the 90-unit access building, again below the parking and access drive, and the third is to the south in that paved access drive. There's a fourth stormwater chamber system in the open area, a green space, below the playground and the open space between the playground and the 90-unit building. A soil survey for this site was prepared by Mark Jacobs last month. Mark's a certified soil scientist. It's included in our submission. The dominant soils on this site are primarily urban complex and husic series soils, both are which well-drained soils, which allows us to utilize these chamber systems which provide infiltration. They group, this husic soils is a group A soils, which essentially means it contains a very high saturated hydraulic conductivity with very deep free water occurrence and low runoff potential when thoroughly wet. In other words, it's sandy, well-drained soils. It's good stuff. Project one lighting plan, shown on sheet C012. This plan calls for 13 pole-mounted lights and 11 wall-mounted lights. These lights are DocSky compliant, and picture of both these pole-mounted and wall-mounted lights are shown in that upper right-hand corner of sheet C012. Amenities provided as part of project one include walking paths in the southerly corner of the property. You can see there's a triangle triangular area here, and there are several walking paths provided in that triangular area. Those are shown on the landscape plan. And then there is a walking path along the easterly boundary of the property, which is here. And the intent of these walking paths are, they're sidewalks in Sherburne. One could actually come in through this area or through Sherburne up here, walk the site to the walking path, around the site, through the woods, there's a walking path, and then there's room to, there's a crosswalk, and then they can walk via sidewalk back out to Sherburne. So it creates a walking trail, partially through the woods, partially through open space, and partially via sidewalks and across the paved parking area. We've also provided as part of amenities, a community garden in this same area here. There are beehives that are proposed in that area, and bike storage and maintenance, and a playground, a large playground between the 90-unit building and the, and the academy, which would be here. Landscaping is provided throughout the site as shown on sheet C14. This plan calls for 21 deciduous trees, 21 coniferous trees, and 81 shrubs and/or ground plants. Project two, which is to be constructed at the completion of project one, includes the renovation of the front portion of the academy building into eight residential units, the removal of the gym portion of the academy, and the construction of a 29-unit building between the school and project one. That, that's the 29-unit building, and that's the 90-unit building, and the school is renovated into eight units. Project two utilizes the access and utilities constructed in project one, and will include the construction of 44 additional parking spaces on the southerly side, shown here. Sidewalks between the access drives and remaining portion of school building are included in project two, and the new 29-unit building, which is in the middle, again, is all part of of project two. There's also in project two a courtyard between that middle 29-unit building and the academy building, and these, this courtyard would be constructed for outdoor space for both the eight units in the school building and the 29-unit middle building. There's also a new fire access road as part of project two, which is here. And that access road would be grasspaver, and that looks and feels like grass, walks like grass, yet if you were to drive a fire truck on it, it upholds the truck without rutting. And the purpose for that is, there's a tremendous amount of green space that we're trying to preserve here, and we really want the look and feel of open space. What we heard from the community is, we want, more than anything, we want open space. We want a place where we can go, where we can sit, where we can put a, you know, if there's a picnic table, a community garden. And so we're trying to preserve as much of the site as we can as open space, and partly to accomplish that, we've provided this fire access road for not only fire trucks, but emergency access in grasspaver, so that it doesn't appear like a paved driveway through the middle of the site. The There's also four EV chargers provided as part of project two, which would be provided, shown on this plan, right in this area here. Parking stalls reserved, reserved for EV parking and four EV parking stalls, which would be accessed via a transformer to be constructed right in the middle area. Drainage for project two is shown on sheet C07. Catch basins conveying stormwater from project two. They convey that stormwater to the parking area. There's a fifth underground storm tech system right here in this southerly parking area, and that's the only stormwater system that would have to be constructed for project two. Once all stormwater improvements are complete, there will be a reduction, significant reduction in surface water peak runoff rate and volume, which is described on page three of our drainage analysis. In other words, if you were to measure the runoff coming from this site today, and then you measure the runoff coming from this site post-construction, there's a reduction in rate and volume post-construction over what exists today, and that's accomplished by these five underground storm tech drainage systems. Project two utilities require much less construction than project one. Most of that infrastructure is put in as part of project one. Again, we're looping sewer, we're looping water, we're looping electric and gas as part of project one, so project two can significantly, can basically tie into these connections that we provided in project one and connect to the two new buildings. The only other addition with project two utilities is the installation of the transformer in this location for those four EV parking stations. Lighting for project two requires six new pole-mounted lights to illuminate the 44 additional parking stalls, again on the south side here. And there will be 10 new deciduous shade trees and 11 shrubs as part of project two, which are shown on sheet C15. One of our main goals, one of the things we heard from the community when designing this project, as I mentioned, was to maximize units without compromising room for amenities and open space. Forty percent of this site will remain as open space, green space. We could fit more units here, but the cry we heard was, units, but we want our open space. And there's no zoning regulations for open space in the municipal zone, but we feel that preserving 40% of it is a, is a big step, and was one of the goals of this project. A lot of thought, community guidance, and suggestions have gone into this project. We've incorporated much of these suggestions into our site design. These comments and feedbacks have really shaped this project. The architecture fits the site and provides 127 new, new workforce units in a community in need of this type of housing. Sarah from Market Square Architects is here to describe and explain the architecture, the building components that make these units well-suited for the site. Sarah?
I can just say, we are limited to only looking at site plan, so
Sure.
But please, if you want to give us a brief outline of the architecture, that would be a nice thing to know.
Sure, I will just run through the architecture as it impacts the site plan specifically. As Corey has already mentioned, we take strong advantage of a natural gradient slope of the site to capitalize on a good amount, a good density towards the rear of the site and being able to take advantage of the street view with the historic building as its primary view and focus. Additionally, building siding was made to capitalize on roof exposure for solar panel installation and additionally to shelter and protect the inner space amenities. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. We'll be happy to address any questions the board may have.
Questions, the applicant?
Yes.
I think I want to, I have several questions, but let's start with how you are going to deal, so I know that the back building sits down, but it, you know, when we look at it on this, it's all very flat, so could you give us a run-through like, be, like, in the end, where the fire road is, those paths, the playground? I mean, where does the hill go up? Can you talk about the topography of how it's going to look when the project's all done from that perspective? It's hard to picture on a flat plan.
Yeah, everything on a plan is white and flat. You're right. And I think the best explanation of that is shown on sheet C06. If you're able, Peter, if you can find that sheet and bring it up, and that's entitled, "Our Grading and Drainage Plan." And what that demonstrates is what that demonstrates is, as you enter the project from Sherburne Road, you're at elevation 60. As you get to the back portion of the academy building, it actually goes up slightly in elevation to about 63 right in here, 64 as you get back here, and then it starts to drop slightly as you, as you enter this way. This goes down to elevation, right about here is elevation 60. So again, you're 64, 63, then down to 62, 61, 60. So it's not a significant drop. And then in the back, as you get to the back of the building And then in the back, as you get to the back of the building, down to about elevation 58 down here. So all the way from here to here is only a six-foot drop in elevation. We're able to keep, in other words, the ground elevation, as I mentioned, in the very back of the site is at elevation 54, but the building is at elevation 59.6, the floor elevation. So we're keeping the floor up, if you will. So again, 64, 63, 62, 61, excuse me, 60, 59, 58 to the back of the building. And then as you come back around the building, here you're about 59, here you're about elevation 60, and then you're back up to 61, 62, and 63. So it's not a significant drop. They're very, they're pretty shallow grades. We did provide a, we provided a drive profile, did we not, Jack, that shows that elevation change? And that drive profile, I think, is a good way to look at it, and that's shown on sheet C-22. If you could turn to that page, please, Peter. It shows the elevation coming in from Sherburne Road at a 2.2% slope, then goes up a 2.5% slope, goes over the crest of a hill and down a 2.4% slope, down to a 1.5% slope and 1.5 back out. So our steepest slope is 2.5%.
So basically, we're not going to be on a slant at the playground or...
Not at all.
...where the fire road is. You know, it's hard to tell when you're looking at those plans, so I appreciate you going through that.
Yeah. Much of the grade difference is really in the middle of the site where that 29-unit building is going. That's going to take up much of the grade difference.
One of my other questions is in regard to Project One, Project Two, and I understand what you're doing in each, and you have put together a timeline, but for those that don't read the package and are kind of at home, could you kind of just let us know exactly, like, you anticipate Project One will take this long? Are you waiting until the entire project's done before the second project gets started? I know it has to do with financing, but if you could just run through a quick timeline to give some sort of points for everyone listening.
Sure. So you're right, Project One is first, that's the 90-unit four-story building, and we anticipate that, I believe it's outlined in our letter, it's anticipated to take 17 months to construct. Once Project One is complete, we can initiate schematic design and finance applications for Project Two. The construction start of Project Two is contingent upon the availability of financing, receipts of any additional permits required, and the, obviously, the availability of cost-effective materials and labors. So briefly stated, Project One takes 17 months. Project Two can then apply for funding. That's going to take several months. It's probably going to be between the start of Project One and the end of Project Two is probably going to be a two-and-a-half to three-year timeline.
Okay. And then while Project One is going on and during that timeline, could you just say how the plan is to make sure that the existing Sherburne School gets maintained during that timeframe? Because it's a long time and it's, the building's sitting empty, can have issues, so...
Yeah, that's a good question, and I think we tried to demonstrate that on the site layout plan for Project Two, which is shown as sheet C-05. So as part of Project One, we're actually providing sidewalks to the academy. Turn to the right page. You can see on C-04, I'm sorry. C-04, we're showing one, two, three, four, five new sidewalks to the academy, so that each door, and these sidewalks are shown where there's doors, current doors, so that pedestrian access, there'll be actually six entrances, including the front, where pedestrians can get to and from the academy. Because during Project One, the academy is maintained, the entire academy, the front and the back portion. So there'll be sidewalks to the parking areas, and maintenance will have to continue throughout the process of constructing Project One.
Who's maintaining the academy during that time period?
That I'm not sure, because it's city-owned property, and I don't know if that's spelled out in the agreement between the PHA and the city or not. That's a question I can't answer.
Do we have that answer? Do we have that answer?
Mark, Andrea? Mark Lentz, the facility director, can elaborate on that?
Since we are, Mark Lentz, Facilities Director for Portsmouth Housing, since we are working in cooperation with the city, the city has done some maintenance on the school already. There was some shingles blown off. We talked to the city, the city sent a crew up there to repair it. I'm actually working on some bids to repaint the facade on the front of the school and possibly the sides and do any repairs. So I think it's fully understood between the two groups that the school will be maintained. The city is currently using the school for storage while their Department of Public Works building addition is being done, so I think there'll be cooperation between both parties. And there is some discussion right now as to while the 90-unit building is being built, we may provide some safety fencing around the building just to keep everybody and equipment and anything else away from the school while construction is being completed.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So it'll be worked out, but somebody, because the building should be heated, and maybe the deputy city manager knows the answer to this question.
Attorney.
Deputy City Attorney, I'm sorry.
Not manager.
My bad, it's too late.
The electric and the heat has been on the building the whole time.
Will you be, well, do you have the answer to this, Trevor? Let's let the deputy city attorney tell us what's...
Thank you, Chair. Deputy City Attorney, Trevor McCourt. Pursuant to the option of ground lease upon exercise of the ground lease by PHA, PHA will be in sole possession and control of the property, including the building, which we would say also includes the responsibility to care for the building and maintain it.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Sorry. I've never seen anyone put a beehive on a site plan before. You really going to put a beehive there?
So my understanding is that there are beehives there now, and this was one of the features that the community specifically asked that we keep in place.
Okay. I did not know that. Thank you. I'll shut up now, I promise.
Yes, Andrew.
Corey, not to make you go back and forth again, thank you for explaining the grading and topography. I think it was very helpful. It also seems very mild. Given the sequential order of the buildings and the fact that the easternmost building, the largest of the buildings, is also the tallest, did you guys do a shadow study or look at the lighting and how that would affect the lower two buildings in the front of the site?
So the lighting plan shows where the plans go and their foot candle at each location. I think it demonstrates as best we can how the ground at each square foot interval or each couple-square foot interval is going to be lighted.
More so about sun exposure and actual shadows.
Oh. Sarah, did we look at, did you folks look at any shadows? I thought there was a brief study done about shadowing and suns. Could you explain that?
Market Square, during some of its earlier studies, did look at the arrangement of the buildings upon the site such that the inner courtyard between the two buildings, between the school building and the 29-unit building, and the angles of the 90-unit building provided maximum daylight and utilization of sun exposure to improve the atmosphere of those spaces. So this is for Project One, which shows the school building that's existing now, and there's a 50-foot separation distance between the two buildings with the gymnasium gone and the 29-story building in its place. There's not a significant difference in height from the height of the gymnasium that's to be demolished and the new 29-unit building's roof structure. And then a considerable distance to the playground, which has a southern exposure.
This may be for you as well. It's more of a curiosity, not a scrutiny. You have a pretty great-sized triangular parking area at the bottom of the page, not necessarily, oh, this is south, at the southern portion of the site. Was there a consideration to move the 29-unit building to that triangular parking area and then put the parking in between the larger building and the school building?
Yes. That decision might have predated my participation in the project, but I do understand that there's an obiter directly south of the plan.
Yeah, the condos.
Yeah. That may have impacted the siding location of the...
There's significant grade in there, too.
Yeah. There's a retaining, retaining wall structures there.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that between the school building and the 29-unit building is a courtyard, and that provides outdoor space for both buildings and connectivity for both buildings. And that's primarily the main reason why we chose the southerly triangle for the parking, as if we put the 29-unit building there, there would be no room for courtyard and no connectivity between the two buildings.
I see. Are there any, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are there any additional amenities inside of these buildings, or are they exclusively residential?
There is community space in the 90-unit building, a community room.
Community room?
Yeah. Yep. I am not sure if the programming is community room for the building residence or the development residence, or if it's intended to be open to a greater population at this time.
Got it. Yes, sir.
Since this is a staggered project, and once construction on the first building is completed, is there, like, are there going to be, like, temporary structures or anything like that in terms of, like, how the property's going to be prepared for the second phase of construction and, like, how that would affect, like, walkability and that kind of thing? I do see some differences between, I think it is like C-06 and C-07 that are immediately obvious, but it might be worth going over just for the record.
So the majority of construction takes place for Project One, right? It's not only the 90-unit building, but most of the infrastructure. Both access drives, most of the parking, most of the utilities, 90% to 95% of the utilities is all installed as Project One. So Project Two becomes much easier to construct because we're providing all of that flat space, if you will. In other words, you put in the, you know, the binder course of pavement, and then you can stage on top of it, and then when Project Two is complete, then put the top course of pavement on, and it all flows pretty well. So there was some careful thought that went into that, and, I mean, ultimately, we need the utilities. Because the utilities come from Sherburne Road, we have to put in all, most of the utilities for Project One, but we're putting in not only that, but the access drives and more than required parking for Project One during Project One construction. So does that address the question?
Yeah, more or less. Thank you.
The good aspect of the grade differential is that you get to kind of hide some of the structure from Sherburne Road. The downside is you have kind of a banned shell in a noise overlay district with the noise being trapped from the highway. So question is, do you have, how are you thinking about protecting from noise? Any fencing, any construction materials, or any other design features that mitigate against this being a noise-trapping environment?
Sure. I'm going to have our noise consultant address that question, because he's here with us tonight. Todd?
Hi, I'm Todd Shepard with SRW Environmental. So when we look at the noise at the site, we're following HUD's guidance because it's going to be federally funded partially. And so the way that the buildings are laid out itself, most of that 90-unit building is blocking a whole ton of that noise that you would have from the highway. There can be some fencing if necessary when we look at our final designs put up to block the noise also, but when we have both those buildings in there, there's really just a slight angle that you would see, you know, you could have the noise coming through. But almost the entire length of that project is blocked, the buildings itself block the noise, and so the playground area is back within, you know, it's in that area which is all blocked by the buildings, the way that they're laid out now. The topography of the site also, it rises quite a bit up from the highway, and so the topography shields a lot of the ground-level noise that would come into the property. Does that answer the questions?
Yes and no. So would you talk more about fencing in your professional opinion? Is it highly desirable, nice to have, or unnecessary?
A lot of times, it's, well, the general rule of thumb is if you can block the line of sight from the noise, you can reduce at least five decibels, just a simple blocking of the line of sight, and you can go up from there if need be. These huge buildings, though, in the way, I mean, that's really going to knock down the noise levels to the outside. They're going to knock down the noise levels to the inside considerably as well, and now you have this great big wide building where that noise attenuation will occur. So if you look at the buildings and you see the playground, there's just this little slight area in between the buildings that is exposed. But again, you have the gradient going down to the highway, which blocks that direct line of sight from the playground to the highway.
We had a project a year or so ago that was on a highway, and there was a decision to use building materials on the side facing the highway but not on the others, which I suppose is an expense-related decision. How do you think about that in this context?
So that's what we would look at also, because, again, on the rear of the building that's not facing the road, you've already attenuated the noise from the front side of the building. So on a building like that, you have a whole wall unit with windows and doors and siding. The windows are going to be your leaky point, where the most noise is going to come into the building. And so you really want to beef up those windows on the sides that the noise is coming from. So I would say everything that's facing the highways on that one long end of the building, and I guess that's the northwest, that's where you want to have your highest noise-attenuating Standard construction these days with modern windows, just plain old double-pane windows, you're going to have at least a 27-decibel reduction. But then when you get up into noise-reducing windows, you can get up to 30, 40, you know, decibel reduction. The standard wall unit with the two-by-six construction and modern insulation, you're looking at at least 50-decibel reductions. And so the unit itself is going to block most of that noise from the interiors. If you've gone into any modern buildings now near noise sources, and we do this a lot, you just don't hear anything. You can hear it, it's just not loud. So by doing that on the... So, by doing that on the noisy side, as I say, for the, for the playground, that's, that's absorbing most of the noise, if you will, or blocking it.
And let me back up to the fence again, is that? Is it a nice to have or is it a really should do that?
It's, I mean, it's just, it, I don't know how to answer that. I mean, it's a nice to have, it's nice to have for the noise reduction, sure. Um, is it nice to have so you don't see the cars? Sure. Maybe not everybody wants to see a fence along there, but there's also some trees along the, the route and everything, so, it wouldn't hurt for noise reduction, I'll put it that way. It's just other reasons whether or not we'd need it.
Do you recommend a fence?
What's that?
Do you recommend a fence?
Um, I think it depends on what the, the final grading looks like on that side. If it's, again, I, I don't think we need to do anything for the buildings themselves.
But based on your study, what you've, what you've looked at, you didn't, you didn't recommend a fence or you did recommend a fence?
You know, I just, I don't remember. I did that a long time ago, to be honest with you. It, as I say, it doesn't hurt to have the fence there. Um, I don't know if it's necessary for the outdoor space. The way that HUD looks at, uh, the way that HUD looks at the outdoor space is it's noise-sensitive uses. And that's where they, they have a sixty-five decibel, um, normally acceptable level. Whether or not a playground is a, is a noise-sensitive use, it's up in the air. Um, we treated it like it was in this case. But again, that's, that's just, uh, maybe in the eye of the beholder.
I'm Jack McTide from TF Moran. Um, I just wanted just to point out that we're, uh, this project is trying to reach passive housing standards, which means that these buildings actually have more insulation than your standard house. And, um, it'll do quite a, quite a bit in itself in the, in the construction. When you're building this to make it weatherproof, you're also making it soundproof. And, um, the passive housing standards that we're trying to attain on this project will deaden a lot of the sound that you would get from the highway.
Which is partly what he was explaining a few minutes ago. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to ask on Project Two, the transformer that's being put in for the EV chargers, will there be any sort of, um, enclosure to that? I think, believe we require some, don't we? Just because I know those can be noisy and that's closest to the residential house that's right there. That's why I pointed that out.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point because our drawing just calls for a transformer on a, I believe, yeah, just calls for a transformer on a pad. But typically transformers have some type of screening and, uh, have no objection to, uh, providing some type of screening there for that transformer. I think it's a good suggestion.
Andrew. Corey, on the northeastern corner of the site where you're bending the corner and vehicles are going towards the exit, you have a blind corner with a confluence of pedestrian walkway, a crosswalk, and cars backing into that blind corner through their slotted parking spaces. Is there an ability to add some design elements or mirrors or some sort of awareness to that corner to help with that?
I'm sorry, you're talking in right here? Yeah, where the crosswalk is.
Uh, it's actually both corners.
Yeah, so on the northeastern corner, the back, yes, thank you. The landscape plan, or the, the one, this plan below that helps a little bit more. Yeah, exactly.
You're talking about the corner up by the, where the generator is?
Precisely.
Yeah, okay. So the, I guess the quick response is there, I mean, there is a, there's a crosswalk there.
Signs.
There's.
I, I guess I'm more concerned about the cars that are on the backside of that turn, blindly backing into where that crosswalk and turn is because the people coming around that turn are not going to be aware, uh, as well as the people backing up where that meets.
Yeah, so there is, well, I guess, yeah. I guess if the, all the parking stalls on the east side are filled, it creates a bit of a visual obstruction. The parking stalls aren't filled, you can see between the building and the generator, those two parking places. My gut reaction is that when you see a crosswalk, a painted crosswalk, at least my typical reaction is to slow down. That alone is, uh, a traffic calming or a slowing, um, mechanism. It's also a, you know, a pretty steep corner which is designed to slow traffic down. And I think between the two, it, it slows them down to a point where we didn't foresee it as a problem with those spaces backing out and someone coming around the corner.
And this, this looks like a road, but it's, but it's really functioning as a parking lot. So the speed limit should be more like a parking lot than a roadway, you know, we're not.
I appreciate the sentiment that you are both safe drivers. However, you have, um, more than a hundred twenty-seven occupants, probably closer to two hundred and twenty occupants on this site. I'm not going to guarantee that they're all going to be aware of that on top of it.
But it's kind of like a traffic calming. In some ways, the, the parked cars are actually a traffic calming feature in itself, but.
Put it this way, someone is blindly backing into a hairpin turn with a crosswalk and other drivers. I'm not going to take an assumption that it's going to go safely. So if we can add a mirror or a light or some sort of element to draw awareness to it, that would be very helpful. That's my only point.
Yep, that'd be, we can take that into consideration.
I think if the crosswalk moves a little bit east away from that backing vehicle, that might help too.
Yep. Uh, problem is we're trying to come up the hills. We can look at, into it, but, um.
It's the same thing down in the southeast corner. You know, you, you get back, cars backing up over the crosswalk right there.
You can make raised crosswalks or something so that it is in fact a slowing element. I know that they've done that now throughout Portsmouth and it has worked. It's worked internally in development sites across different areas and plazas and what have you, so.
I, I, actually, the more I look at it, think it's a really good suggestion and, and seeing your point.
This way, this way.
It wasn't entirely based on.
You know, if that crosswalk was raised and a caution sign was put there and a sign prior to you getting to the sidewalk, you know, speed table or raised sidewalk, those two in of itself are going to calm the traffic before it approaches that corner.
I mean, if you want opportunities, like go to West End Yards, they have a speed table. If you go to Portsmouth Green, they have raised, um, granite curbbing.
Yeah, and it works well.
All of which definitely slowed me down, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get your point and think it's a good suggestion and it's not hard to, to put a speed table there and a, and a caution sign that.
And if that's the biggest thing I'm griping about, then you guys are doing okay. You're in a good spot.
When, when you first, when I first look at it, I'm thinking, all right, it's a really sharp corner. Who's really going to go that fast? But you're right, people, that's a long straightaway there and it's not, the corner itself isn't going to slow down young new drivers on their way to Dunkin' Donuts in the morning for their coffee. It's, it could be a problem.
Well, specifically if there are no pedestrians there too, right? Like in the middle of winter, if there are no pedestrians and people assume that nobody's going to walk across, but in fact somebody's backing out of that space, that's an issue, so.
Yeah, no, good point. Well taken.
So we're all happy with the raised crosswalk? Is that how that resolved?
Whatever works.
Whatever works. Okay.
The most effective engineering solution is however, I would say.
Most effective engineering solution might be a little bit much, but. Any other questions?
I was leaving it in their hands.
I do believe, we have public hearing on this even though it's, yeah, I think we, I'm going to have a couple of the public hearing. Anybody here or, and I haven't forgotten about the deputy city attorney. Here on Zoom, who speak two for against this application.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Councilor Moreau. Uh, Aaron Garganta, four-twenty-three Colonial Drive. Uh, been a lifelong resident of Panaway Manor. Couple of questions that I have and things for consideration regarding to the traffic patterns of the property. I'm curious, I, I understand the reasoning for the two-way entrance at the southernmost driveway, but I think we're, we're not really designing amenities that are going to draw throngs of people from elsewhere in the city of Portsmouth over to our little corner of the Portsmouth world. So, I think what I'd like, I'd love to see from a, from a safety perspective is if that first southernmost driveway could establish a one-way entrance with a circulation pattern through the entire property and a one-way exit. Having driven that road my entire life, um, when folks enter that neighborhood and come inbound into Panaway Manor and take that corner, that driveway is going to be awfully close to the corner, um, which does seem to represent that it's been smoothed out a little bit from its current configuration where a couple of years ago when they put in sidewalks, they put this god-awful bump out which forces you to drive into the opposing lane of traffic to navigate the corner. Um, so when they change the radius of that, folks are going to come around the corner and the way the landscaping is planted on that corner, you have the Amazon trucks, FedEx trucks, UPS trucks for a hundred and twenty-seven units coming in and out of that property, a percentage of which are coming out of that driveway. You're going to have some interactions with inbound traffic to the Panaway Manor neighborhood. And if all of your exit from that property comes from the northernmost driveway, I think that's going to make for a safer all-around project for the people that live both in the complex and on the other side of the bridge. My second comment is, is on the exit. I'd really love to see the development work with the state DOT on their I-ninety-five property to pull the fence that is currently right at the northern part of the driveway. Um, if you're a pedestrian coming over the bridge south, riding a bike and, or, and/or in a vehicle, you literally cannot see a vehicle exiting that property until you're in their fender, from a pedestrian or cyclist standpoint. So, as that sidewalk approaches the northernmost driveway, if they could work with the DOT to pull that fence to give an ample sightline for people who are exiting the property and for pedestrians, cyclists and southbound motorists, I think that would be a great improvement in safety, to the exiting vehicles of that property. Um, a question for the sound experts is that your sound study was completed, um, like you mentioned, a year or two ago. And before this project starts, there will be a twenty-foot concrete sound barrier on the other side of the highway, which I expect will reflect highway noise back at this property. And I'm wondering if your noise study is going to need to take into consideration elevated noise levels because of that new sound barrier. I'll see you for round two. Thank you.
And just for clarification, there's no interaction between folks in the audience? So, you have a question, you raise it to us and.
Yeah.
Any, any other, I guess, first round speakers?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, um, council, um, I'm used to speaking in front of the council, uh, board members and Councilor Moreau. My name is Manuel Garganta. I live at four-seventy-one Colonial Drive, Panaway Manor. Um, I see we're finally coming to some type of fruition with this project. That feels like it's going on forever. The question I have, which Councilor took care of the first one, was who's going to maintain the front building on, on the project two? We had never heard about two projects. The original, um, thing was one project, we got the money. And the way the federal government's giving out money lately, I don't even know if you're going to get that when you expect. I have a question on the traffic study. Um, I'm not worried about the traffic on Sherburne Road. We're going to be changing Bothwick down on the bottom end, coming in at eight o'clock in the morning off of Route Three, off of Exit Three. Everybody's heading to the hospital, they're heading to Liberty Mutual. I go out every morning around eight o'clock. There is a lot of traffic there. You're going to add a hundred and twenty-seven units to a facility that mostly everybody's got two cars. You know, I've never seen one-point-six cars driving down a road. So, we're going to add at least rough around that, two-hundred-and-thirty cars more. Of course, they're all leaving at different times, but I, I don't, I've never saw anybody doing a traffic study. I never saw the things across the road. I didn't see anybody with counters. Was this done at midnight? I, originally the traffic study said you're going to get nine extra trips during the day, fourteen in the afternoon. That ain't happening. When they changed Cogly Road to cross over to Bothwick, people are going to go out our way to avoid the mess that's down there. We have to take a look at this traffic study. And I have never seen any traffic study presented anywhere. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Eric Keenison. I live at thirty-eight Georges Terrace. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Um, this has been a project that is, I've watched and I think it's taken a considerable amount of time, but I guess we're getting closer. Since the agenda kind of, uh, announced that your concerns was with the highway noise overlay district, I just want to recollect what I recall. The New Hampshire DOT made assessment for what areas qualified for construction of sound barriers along the I-ninety-five corridor. These decimal levels did not qualify the Sherburne School. Since construction along the west side of the corridor along Panaway Manor has begun, it's observed that these sound barriers, walls are all concrete and will reflect sound to the east towards Sherburne School versus absorbing any type of sound. Here's my question. Has any recalibration or more than an assumption of the sound results from that, from, from that sound wall on the, um, west side of the highway been calculated for your knowledge? And for the residents inside the building? We've heard some, some, you know, uh, testimony to say that the windows are going to have, uh, going to mitigate some of the sounds. But more importantly, for the open and recreational spaces, and we've heard some assumptions, nothing with any type of qualitative recalibration of what that additional sound attenuating toward the school is going to result in. If this has been a oversight, should the planning board ask for additional information and study clarifying this issue and possibly engineering improvements? During the summer months, there is a buffer area with the foliage here, but there is none during the spring, winter or fall. So that, so that absorption of any of the foliage on that side, on the Sherburne side is none, I don't say nonexistent, but minimal. And because this project doesn't have any barrier, any sound barrier, um, I'm wondering if that's something that this, that the planning board, um, would consider necessary to mitigate the increased amount of sound that's going to be coming from the reflection of that, of the sound barrier on the west side of the highway. I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other first round speakers? Anybody on Zoom? Second round speakers.
Hello again, Aaron Garganta, four-twenty-three Colonial Drive. It's only become recent information to those of us in the neighborhood who participated in the early discussions which originally started, I think it was something like a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty units was originally proposed at a neighborhood meeting. And then has since, you know, been massaged down to a hundred and twenty-seven. A big concern for the neighborhood was seeing these large new buildings. I think a great compromise was the preservation of the existing school and using that to mask the new construction behind it. I, I think one of the concerns that some of us have now with this being a phased project is there doesn't seem to be any kind of guarantee that Phase Two will occur or occur as proposed, which is a twenty-nine unit building and the renovation of the school into, I believe, eight units. So I'm, I'm curious, you know, are there any opportunities within the lease agreement that has yet to be signed with the city to put any language in that lease agreement that states that the original school building needs to be preserved and that we're not going to end up with some up with some threshold that says because of the city's poor maintenance on the building over the years, that it has reached a point where it is not salvageable or too costly to renovate? At which time, we will be back here trying to get approved another 97-unit building because it's quite a large footprint that is occupied by the existing school and the 29-unit, both which are being deferred to Phase 2. So I would really feel more comfortable, and I think our neighbors would feel comfortable, all the people who have been living out there, you know, we have approximately 180 homes in the entire neighborhood, and we're now adding 127 more occupants to the neighborhood. So we're almost doubling the size of the neighborhood. And I, and I just would really regret to have to have conversations about this in the future related to, you know, oh, I'm sorry, we can't do that building as we intended, it's too costly, and here's, you know, the ROI is better if we rip it all down and build another four-story building with 90 units. So, you know, my question is, is there, is there any way to put into legal documents that the original building will be preserved, much like we've preserved virtually every other old elementary school in the city of Portsmouth? We didn't rip many of them down. They've all been turned into senior housing or other forms of housing. So I don't think it's an unreasonable ask to preserve this building, both for its stated historical value, its value to those people who have been in the neighborhood for generations. And yeah, I think that's all I had to add was related to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other second-round speakers?
Yes, Eric Henderson, Portsmouth. I want to just reiterate what the previous speaker said. I don't know whether it's within the realm of the planning board to make recommendations to the city council, but I've read the option lease agreement a number of times. I'm not the best guy to read some of this, some of the legal, you know, components of it, but I didn't find anything in there that obligated in any final agreement that PHA will have responsibility of those, of that building. It's kind of great. I know, I appreciated Trevor's interpretation of it, and we're just making some assumptions, but I hope in the final lease agreement that there is a distinct language that places the maintenance of that building, the responsibility of PHA when the property is transferred. There seems to be enough time, if you have any reservations about the way the project has been presented to you tonight, if you want to postpone the acceptance of this proposal, there seems to be an adequate amount of time before any funding takes place, which is, I think PHA is scheduled to receive final determination of any funding in early December. And I think I understand that any final lease agreement wouldn't be till the end of December. So if there's any other, you know, additional information that makes you feel comfortable in accepting this proposal, you have the time to state your concerns and those concerns, and those, the answers to those concerns can be addressed at another time if you decide to postpone this or table it at this particular moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Manny Garganta, 471 Colonial Drive. I want to reiterate what these, the previous speakers have said. People ask, what's so important about that school? That school is generational. A lot of people went to that school. My whole family went to that school, my three sons, my wife, her family. It's, I know it's just bricks and mortar, but there's a lot more to that place than just bricks and mortar. We've saved every school in the city of Portsmouth. They've turned it into something to reiterate what Aaron said. I'd like to see that school stay. To see bricks and mortar out there, I can see what they're doing, hide them down back, fine. Don't bring those things forward. Leave that school. The Beehive, to me, is a kupla. It's a, it's a, it's a point where people recognize, I know it's only for the people out there, but there've been a lot of families out there that have been there, 60, 70 years, long time. Please consider that if we do a ground lease, let's write that in. Because, you know, like I said before, the federal government is not handing out money anymore. They may only get the first phase. The second phase, you see it every day in the news, they're cutting, 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 cutting. They're not going to be paying attention to Portsmouth. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other second-round speakers? Corey, did you speak in the first round?
I did not.
You're not allowed to speak in the second round. Any third-round speakers? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And just for the record, I did ask the deputy city attorney, not the deputy city manager, I apologize for that mistake, to provide a letter, which I'm going to put in the record. But he has given us an opinion, and would you like to just explain it briefly, Trevor? Since I'm losing my voice.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, so I'd like to just explain a little bit the, the legal authority for the construction of below-market-rate housing on city property here and why we have the, we're offering to you, the city's offering to you and PHA is offering to you, the, the review of this project that you're being offered. And at the end, I would, I have one other little piece that I'd like to just ask of the board as well while we're here. So under state law, use of government property, municipal property, for what's called governmental use is generally exempt from, from zoning review. Now, those projects still have to come before the planning board for non-binding comment. And, and it brings us to the definition of what is a governmental use. Now, the statute provides both what is traditionally governmental use and what is statutorily authorized as a governmental use. And in my opinion, this is, this is both. Using the Sherbin property for below-market-rate housing is both traditionally governmental in nature and statutorily. There's a specific statute relating to, to housing authorities, which, which permits local municipalities to contract with their local housing authority to, for the construction of below-market-rate housing on municipally-owned property. Further, this project is also traditionally governmental in nature. We know that here in Portsmouth because we have several, several properties, one right across the parking lot, which, which is housing on city property. Clearly Portsmouth has a long tradition of using government, of municipal property for below-market-rate housing. Therefore, this project certainly falls under that criteria. And now, the policymaking body here in the city, the city council, has entered in, has authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement with PHA in what's called a land use compliance agreement. That sets out the parameters by which you and the, ultimately the city manager will have to review the project that PHA is proposing. This is, this is the framework that you have to review. The, the two biggest things, the two biggest pieces of that are the site plan review regulations and the highway noise overlay district regulations. Also contained in that agreement is, is a review of this project relative to the RFP, which was put out relative to the Sherbin property, PHA's response to that RFP, any addenda to the RFP, and then there's also the, the catch-all clause at the end, which is review in the best interest of the city. And PHA's proposal and all of your comments and all the comments that have been made and all the, the public, the, the public sessions, the comments made at TAC, all of that is, is going to go after this meeting to the city manager for her final approval. So this is my ask of all of you, because you're the planning board, and the city council has specifically asked for your review subject to those criteria. So all the commentary that you've had so far is, is really great. I mean, I've been listening closely, I'm sure the city manager's listening closely. And I would ask that any other recommendations that you have for the development of the site, you put into the record here, you memorialize into some comments that can go to the city manager for her consideration. And I will say, there's been a lot of comment, commentary about the ground lease. Now, a ground lease, I, I would, I would tell you, you don't have to concern yourself with a ground lease right now because a ground lease is an interest in land, and the, the ordinance also provides that the only body that can alienate or accept interest in land in the city is the city council, but they can only do so after they receive a recommendation from the planning board. Therefore, when a, when a ground lease is drafted, that document will have to come back to you all for comment before it goes back to the city council for their final acceptance or, or rejection. Based on all that, I'd be happy to answer any and all questions that anybody might have.
Just so I make sure the public understands, when that ground lease comes back to us, though, it's not a public hearing. It's just for us to discuss and make comments back, but people could then speak at the city council meeting. I just want to make sure it's clear when people want, might want to speak about that.
Sure, there, there wouldn't necessarily be, there would not be a public hearing on that either here or at the city council. Unlike the planning board, the city council does have a public comment kind of built in as a function. But certainly either, either entity could suspend its rules and accept, accept more public comment or, or ask staff to schedule a public hearing on it. There'd be no limitation on that, but it wouldn't be, it would not be inherent.
It's not required.
Not required, yes, thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Bill?
How can we increase the likelihood that this will comply with the noise overlay district requirements?
Well, PHA has, pursuant to the requirements in the highway noise overlay district, PHA has contracted with a, an expert who's brought a report back to you regarding, regarding his findings for noise at the site. Now, I understand that there's been some, some comments about perhaps changing conditions or, or questions about the viability or necessity of a fence. If, certainly the board could, could make some sort of commentary based on what it's heard to the city manager, some recommendations about some things that she may ask in addition. I mean, I encourage you to treat this like a project, like any other project. I mean, you can place, you can recommend the placement of conditions that have to be satisfied either before or after the issuance of a building permit. And that could be for, for more information, that could be for the, the placement of a fence if that's what the board decided would help the project comply with the highway noise overlay district. Does that help?
Somewhat.
I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a noise expert, certainly, so I can't really tell you what, what would help alleviate noise concerns myself.
Any other questions for Deputy City Attorney? Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
So I didn't stop the discussion because, but we are supposed to stop at 10 and talk about whether we continue.
Yeah.
We definitely, we definitely need to finish with this application, but we, if we're going to go further, we need to vote to do that, or we continue the other items.
Move to continue.
Second. We have a motion to continue the other items in a second. Any discussion?
What's the motion?
To continue the other items on the agenda after this one.
Finish our agenda.
Including this, or?
No, we're going to finish this one.
Okay, good.
You said, including this one, you said, no, we're finished with this one.
We're finishing.
Finishing this one.
Finishing. Sorry, I've got a frog in my throat. Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So this will be the last one tonight. Discussion.
I have a quick question. Is the Sherbin house on any historic register, whether city, state, federal? Not that I'm aware of. Peter?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that we're aware of.
Trevor McCourt may have something to say about that.
Oh, he might. Maybe I'm wrong.
If you want, I can answer the question. It, it's, it is not at this time. I understand that part of PHA's funding plan would be to apply for historic tax, some sort of historic tax credits, which, which would involve some historic restrictions on, being placed on the property.
Would it require being put on the historic register?
That, you know, I don't know that.
There are varying levels of that.
Yeah.
You'd make a recommendation that, to ensure the building is maintained, but even though it seems Trevor's comfortable with that, yes, Andrew?
Yeah, I definitely get all of the comment. I definitely get the notion to have some sort of binding agreement. In the excerpt that is included with this, it says, "If the city manager approves the project, any material changes to those items subject to review pursuant to the city's site plan review regulations to the form and substance of approved projects shall only be made following a written request from Portsmouth Housing." So, yes, if the, if PHA wanted to knock down that school, they would have to come back here and literally ask that exact question explicitly, and that would not go well. And I do not think I would be voting for that if they wanted to knock it down. So I take comfort in the fact that any material change, such as knocking down a school, would have to come back before us. And I also think that there's a pretty large community over there in the Sherbin neighborhood that would probably have something to say about it. So I have strong confidence in the way it is written now, as well as the site plan we're approving. In addition to that, I don't think that PHA is going to jeopardize their federal funding by trying to circumvent this school building. So to me, I, it does not bother me how it's written now. I, yeah, we can say it into the record that we want to recommend maintaining this school for the duration of this project and thereafter, however it needs to be in the development proposal, but it doesn't scare me how it's written at this moment.
Yes, Beth.
I would like to second everything Andrew said and just remind everyone that this is also the organization that refurbished the Lafayette School, right? So they actually have a history of taking some of our older buildings that were schools and turning it into public housing, including the cottage across the way. So I, I think that they have a history of doing it. They're already planning on trying to use heritage tax credits in order to do it. So it's in their best interest as well to maintain the property so that it can qualify for some of the funding sources that they want to go down. So I'm with you in the fact that I think that the way it's written works right now and don't have a whole lot of heartburn over moving forward, knowing that they would have to come back if anything to that plan changed.
I get those points. My, my concern is it's Phase 2, and if things get held up so that Phase 2 can't happen for more than a year and a half, say it's three, four, five years out.
They still have to maintain it.
Yeah, well, if we, if it's maintained, if it's heated in particular, that's the key.
Well, that would...
It, you know, we can't make it a condition, I'm just saying.
No, but as we've heard here tonight...
On the record, it's under, the way it was represented, they have to maintain it, so...
Right, and, and...
With that understanding, I'll drop the issue and let's just...
It would, yeah, it would just be gross negligence on their part, and I don't think they want to jeopardize. The way that all of these tax credits work, there is review at every threshold. And so to disregard those and not go through with that would inherently jeopardize their entire project, and they could be pulled from the middle of the project if that's the case. And I simply do not think that is going to happen.
I would actually like to ask Peter a question if I could. So in my mind, I'm thinking it's probably valid to ask them to relook at the sound after the sound walls are up. So would we put that into like an amendment to the findings of fact or put it into a condition of the...
Condition of the conditional use.
And to dovetail on that, if I may, the sound report is lengthy and all-encompassing except for when the sound experts appear and said, he doesn't know or nor does he have a recommendation...
a recommendation about a fence. And so that didn't make me feel all warm and fuzzy inside, and leads me to believe that we should probably be recommending a fence, whether that's post-certification of occupancy, based on...
But I think it could be part of the condition, that they relook at it and figure out whether or not a fence or some other thing.
Unless I heard it incorrectly.
Well, what I heard was that it's been a while since he looked at it. So if we made a condition that it would, that it would be reexamined in light of current known conditions, and a recommendation made to staff as to whether a fence or other things are needed, I think that would work. Because I also heard that the way this building is going to be built, they may not need it.
Right, and that might be a possibility.
And that's above us.
For sure.
He probably knows the answer, but he doesn't know it tonight.
4NOx 2.0, but given that it's a playground, and this entire thing is built on community and simulating a good community environment, yeah, it's just like, that's my only thought.
If that's the condition, I think that covers it.
I think it's post-development.
Yep. Well, it'd be under the conditionally use permit for the highway over noise, highway noise overlay district. Okay, well, should I just get it started? Because nobody else is. Vote to find the conditionally use permit application meets the requirements set forth in Section 10.674 of the ordinance and recommend the city manager adopt the findings of fact as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then I will vote to recommend the city manager approve conditionally use permit as presented for Project One, on the condition of relooking at the sound based off of the changes that are happening in that area, specifically the sound walls going up, to ensure the plan that is in place will accommodate and work moving forward, or something like that. Yeah, you got me, Peter?
Second.
Or something like that.
Was that incorporating the reexamine based on current conditions?
Right, right. Reexamining, looking at base, and see if the current plan is still satisfies the requirements. Yeah.
Peter's writing, so I think he's got it.
I think he does, he keeps writing. That's why I haven't gone on.
Go ahead.
I think that's the only one I want under that one, so I think we've, them vote, and then we have the other one.
We had a second on that, right?
Yep.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, go ahead, Bill.
No, I, you were, I thought you were looking for a second.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would continue to say that we vote to recommend the city manager approve the conditionally use permit as presented for Project Two.
Second.
I think it would be satisfied by that point, I would hope. So, no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Vote to find that the site plan application meets requirements set forth in the site plan regulations, Section 2.9, evaluation criteria, and recommend the city manager adopt the findings of fact as presented for Projects One and Two.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then we have to vote to recommend the city manager grant the site plan approval for Project One with the following conditions that are in here, subsequent, or no, precedent, I keep saying it wrong because it's written on precedent, and the ones satisfied subsequent. Yep, okay, and then the other one. But I, sorry, I have some notes, I have to go back to my prior page to get to them. If I get a second. Yeah.
There was a second, I think.
Was there a second? Okay. No, 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 no. Oh, yes. I would like to add a condition precedent that they at least look at the two issues regarding the traffic flow, the one request about whether or not, because it is really close to that corner, and thinking about cars pulling out there. I understood the reason why they did it, but also especially knowing that the, I know it would be hard to work with the DOT, but to really look at the sight lines coming in and out of the project, and to see if one way in and one way out might be a better solution in the end, just be nice if they took one more look at that, and, you know, really ensured that it's going to work for the property and for the neighborhood.
And then those two pedestrian crossings?
Oh, yes, and the pedestrian crossings, we had all that conversation about, and the other one, we'll wait till the other one, yeah.
Andrew, those two raised pedestrian crossings, that was that?
That's in this, right.
Got wrangled out?
The east side, north and south of the big building. Yeah. All right, I think that was all of those, right? For that one.
I believe it was.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, then we move on to vote to recommend the city manager grant site plan approval for Project Two with the included stipulations, and the only one to add to this one is that they relook at the transformer for the EV chargers that's part of Project Two, to ensure that it has proper either screening or fencing, whatever might be needed, because I worry about the noise and the neighbor that is so close to that, just to make sure it's good, just double-check it. One more second. Somebody else had something else.
Discussion.
Just to reiterate everything we just talked about, 2.1 of this is the applicant has two years from the issuance of a building permit on Project One to obtain a building permit for Project Two, which therein lies your answer about the school.
Right.
It helps.
It helps.
Two years unheated doesn't help, but, yeah.
It helps.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I did them, I think I did them all.
Really great.
I'm like, run out of words to say.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all for your thoughtful consideration. We appreciate it.
Thanks for a good point.
We are adjourned.